We're conducting this meeting pursuant to the Governor's orders. So we will, let me fix that. There we go. We're fine now. Anyways, we're conducting this meeting pursuant to the Governor's emergency orders. So there's a little bit of a hybrid going on here. All the public comment capacities are listed on the agenda and online. We're going to call the five o'clock closed session meeting to order. But before that, we've got to do that in public. Then the City Clerk, please call it off.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Protim Benencourt?
I'm here.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
And Councilmember Loa?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Outstanding. Okay. Closed session, public comments. Do we have any public comments for the closed session?
Not at this time. This is the time for the public to be able to participate in the meeting. If you are attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If you are attending by personal computer, please click the "Raise Your Hand" button. Press six to unmute yourself and state your name and begin speaking. There is a three-minute limit on each speaker. Do we have anyone at this time?
City Attorney?
I would just like to thank Mr. Mayor Hoffbauer and Ms. Chris for cleaning up the Royal Springs Trail and making it a beautiful park again. And the Pomno City of Pomno for providing all the machinery to clean up the Royal Springs Trail.
Can you state your name, please, sir?
Oh, Anthony Rivera.
Thank you.
Anthony, thank you very much, yeah. And as hard as we all worked, there's more junk out there today. So we were just back out there tonight. Thank you very much, and thank you for your help on that.
No problem.
Thank you. Anything else?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. So, City Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor. The items to be discussed and closed items are those that are listed on the agenda. Nothing further.
All right. So we can... Okay, so you have those items? Okay, good. We will exit to the closed session, and we will return to report out. Thank you very much.
City clerk will be back on the record.
Yes.
City attorney, you want to... Yeah, but... Make your walk, make the walk down there, huh?
Yeah, this works for me. Thank you very much. All right, reporting from closed session as to item 4.1, City of Palmdale versus Barrera. The... Computer freezes. The city council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further portal action at this time. Should be noted that all members of the city council were present and able to participate in this and all matters. As item 4.2, Existing Litigation, C.B. Communities versus AVEC, the city council was provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further portal action at this time on this item. Item 4.3, Conference with Real Property Negotiators. The city council has provided an update on this item and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further portal action at this time. And as item 4.4, Conference with Labor Negotiators. The conference was provided, an update on this matter, providing unanimous direction to the mayor. There's nothing further to report at this time.
All right. So, thank you, sir. So, we will go ahead and we will adjourn the closed meeting and we'll reconvene at 7:00 P.M. Thank you, everyone.
Turned on.
Okay, I was asked to hold up for a second here, stand by.
Can you hear us, Mayor?
Yeah, just let me know when you're ready.
We're ready to get started when you are.
Okay, and all set, all right. So we'll go ahead and call the the seven o'clock meeting of the Palmdale City Council's order. And we're going to alter order to City Council, the Successor Agency, and the Housing Authority, the Palmdale Civic Authority, and the Palmdale Financing Authority. So can we do a pledge of allegiance? And in a moment, a moment of silence in honor of our troops and our first responders, please. And let's see, who can I grab? Chris Fraga-Sans, can you step up to the podium and lead the pledge for us, please?
Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands unyielding, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Great, okay, city clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chair Ben Court.
Here.
Council members, directors, commissioners, Carrillo.
Present.
Loa.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
And Commissioners Brown and Fraga-Sans.
Here.
Thank you, we have a coin.
Do we have Mr. Brown with us tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I didn't hear that. Okay, so we're going to move on to item number 10, presentations. I'm going to have Mr. Murphy's going to do the Warrior Award for this month.
Mr. Mayor, before we go into the presentations, I'd like to see if we can move item 18.1 to alter 19.4. If I need to make a motion, I'll do that.
Well, after, when we get, we moved down because we've got a couple of ones to move, so we'll move those up. Whatever we need to do to facilitate the meeting flow here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to stand here tonight and present our Warrior Award. Janelle Sampson, Janelle, if you will come up, six feet away. Janelle, who recently was promoted, works in our finance department, is a true warrior for the city of Palmdale. Through her true dedication, she has worked countless hours, including nights. Including nights and weekends.
You, please.
To ensure the city's budget and CAFR is accurate and complete. While finalizing the city's fiscal year 2021 budget, she was able to conquer the enormous undertaking of updating a new charter of accounts and truly simplifying it for our city. Along with completing all these major tasks, she has also established herself as a key finance person for providing amazing customer service to anyone who encounters general ledger account issues, budget issues, et cetera. Janelle, while I've only been here a couple of years, I know you're a go-to person and have really simplified it, and I've heard from numerous managers, supervisors, department directors, how easier the budget is from things that you, Keith, Marie have brought to the table. And it's a pleasure to award you the Warrior Coin, and we'll get a picture with your, the helmet on. I haven't taken the coin out of the, you know, we're COVID coining now.
So you keep it in the plastic. Or required to try to put this on. Turn around.
You know what? Tilt it back, I can't see your eyes. There you go.
It's very uncomfortable.
You gonna fall over? All right, I'm gonna take a couple of shots just because. Hold on, one this way.
Congratulations.
You get this for a couple of weeks in your office. Okay, Mayor, before we jump into the Q critter, we had another request from Jennifer Fox. She's a community volunteer leader from the American Red Cross Northern Valley Chapter. She requested the city palmed up her claim March 2021 Red Cross Month. The request came in late, but our city clerk's office duefully got a proclamation together, so if you wouldn't mind, I'll read it, if that's okay, Mayor. so if you wouldn't mind, I'll read it, if that's okay, Mayor? I didn't hear him, but I saw him, and I can read lips, he said yes.
Unlike others, I muted myself, which I'm sure most people would approve of, thank you.
Proclamation, American Red Cross Month, Chris, don't get me in trouble. Whereas, March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Palmdale, across the United States, and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas during the trying times of the coronavirus pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country or rolling up their sleeves to give blood when our country faced a severe blood shortage. And whereas here in Palmdale, families have relied on disaster response volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with home fires and other disasters, the Northern Valley Chapter's volunteers have supported local families in other ways as well, including supplying local hospitals with blood and commensurate plasma as a treatment for COVID-19. This life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. And whereas nearly 200 years since the birth of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advocate her noble legacy, and we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. Now, therefore, Stephen D. Hoffbauer, Mayor of the city of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to reach out and support its humanitarian mission.
So. The Cross was, there were always the heroes writing in, writing in from over the past to get that housing when we would have families displaced for any reason. And I crossed a major milestone in that I made my first blood donation last month. So it's not that bad, if a wimp like me can do it, anybody can do it, so. Thank you, JJ. We get the Q Quick Critter? Carrie's gonna handle this.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Tonight, we bring you three awesome cats that are available for adoption at the Palmdale Animal Care Center. First, at the top, you can see Uncle Buck. Uncle Buck came into the care center on February 24th as a stray. He's described as being very sweet and very friendly with staff, and he's available for public adoption to homes with middle-school-aged children and other calm dogs. And then the fluffy one in the middle, that is Buddy. Buddy is a five-year-old neutered male husky, he's been at the care center since February 22nd. He was surrendered by his owners, who could no longer care for him. They say Buddy is a very soft and independent boy who has interacted well with other dogs. He's available for public adoption with the recommendation of calmer dogs and children eight years old and above. And then you have Princess, down there at the bottom, that pretty girl. She's approximately a year-and-a-half-year-old space female Husky Shepherd mix. Was reached, she recently came back to the care center on February 28th after being returned by a previous adopter. She's a very high-energy dog that requires a lot of attention. She's done well with other dogs, as long as they are not overly playful and give her space. She is available for public adoption to a family with middle-aged schoolchildren or older and calm dogs. I wanted to also announce that the Los Angeles County Animal Care and Control is offering March Meow-ness. So all cats are at a reduced adoption fee of $15. We would have had cats featured tonight, but we have a great problem at the Palmdale Animal Care Center. There are only two cats at the Palmdale Animal Care Center. One has a list of prospective adopters already, and the other one is waiting for a medical clearance before they can go up to for adoption, so. But that does not mean that there's not needy cats at the other animal care centers, so take advantage of that March Meow-ness. And anybody that adopts any of our featured pets, whether they are our council Q Critters or featured on our Palmdale Public Safety Facebook page, our Four-Legged Friday, is eligible for a goodie bag here from the Neighborhood Services Department. Thank you.
Excellent. So don't forget, you get a bag full of goodies if you adopt a critter, so. Value to be determined, right? Okay, item number 11 is Public Comments and Housing Authority Consent Calendar. These is item 12.1 and 12.2. Do we have anything on that?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Alrighty, on the Housing Authority, do I have a motion on the consent calendar or request to pull anything?
I'm sorry, Mayor, we do have one person on the line for a public comment.
Is this on which item?
For the Housing Authority.
Which item?
They just have their hand raised, they are on the Zoom to speak to Council.
Correct, is this on item 12.1 or item 12.2?
They didn't say.
Okay, I think they need to identify which one that they wanted to comment on, because this is what is, the comment is limited to that section.
Caller, if you're on the line, please say your name and begin.
Hi, this is Rosie Maynella from a firm, the Council for Prevention of Child Abuse, and I believe I am mistaken to have raised my hand at this particular moment. I do want to speak in public comment time, though.
Okay, alright, great, yeah, just trying to follow the script here, thank you. Okay, anything else, City Clerk?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, so Council and Housing Authority, any comments or a motion on number 12?
Move to approve number 12, second.
Okay, who made the motion?
Loa. Carrillo, second.
And Correa? Any further discussion? City Clerk, call the roll.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chair Bettencourt?
Yes.
Commissioners Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loa?
Yes.
Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Commissioner Fragasans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Continuing on the joint Council and other agency business, on item number 13, I have a staffer, friends of Finance Manager Kang, will he be making a presentation?
I'm gonna make a brief comment about it. So this is to just end and close the fiscal year 1920, ending June 30, 2020. We had a very successful audit. Our auditors issued unmodified opinion, which is highest opinion and clean book. And this particular item is to ask Council to close the book for fiscal year 1920. That concludes my comment.
Thank you. Council and Housing Authority members, or Housing Authority members and authority, authorities, all the various authorities, any comments?
I'd like to ask the question if Keith has the information available. Can you tell me what the current balance is of the Palmdale Community Foundation Fund? I tried to get, I tried to get through the 400 pages of what you gave us, but I couldn't find that balance.
I don't have the numbers off my head, but either Janelle can probably get you the info, but I'll provide the info by tomorrow morning.
Okay, and just to be clear, is this the fund where people who want to donate stuff to the city, it goes into the Palmdale Community Foundation Fund, is that what that fund is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that maybe as a council, we should bring this up more often, that a lot of people try to donate to our city, and they don't know how. For people that want to donate to the city, they can actually donate to the Palmdale Community Foundation. And there might be some small guidelines with it, I'm not really sure, the details have changed a few times. So maybe, maybe in the future, we can get a little more information and push that out to the public so that they know how to donate if they want to.
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, last time we checked, it was quarter of a million, and I think the year before that, it was a quarter million. I think the year before that, it was, I think, a quarter million.
Yeah, I just don't know if we actually can do that or not, so.
Yeah, well, we were supposed to get some information back on how to, we have money sitting there that can't be spent, because the guy needed, you know, $10,000 for a Hartz accord, but we're never gonna buy a Hartz accord, and they're $100,000.
Right.
Supposed to be some research done on, could make notice to free that money up.
Right.
And narrow down the, or give the city more flexibility in future donations, because it was just, we've got projects that all of us would like to see move forward.
Right.
In the interest of the community, and we have money sitting there that we can't spend. So perhaps finance and everyone can continue to look at that, and hopefully next year, we can see where we've actually spent some of that money, out of that, okay?
Alright, so just so, just you know, Janelle just provided information, we have $250,000 balance.
Yep.
May it be right.
Like Groundhog Day.
Alright, now, in regards to the.
Yeah, I was just hoping that we had spent some of it, that we had finally resolved the issues that were prohibiting us from spending the money, so that, you know, people, people want this money spent in Palmdale. This is their goal of donating, and so for it to sit there, you know, five, 10, 20 years and not be spent, you know, people donate because they want to see improvements in the city, so, yeah, let's go revisit that whole idea of releasing those funds in some way without getting, you know, ourselves in trouble, of course.
Yes, exactly, some of that money was donated when we were rehabbing, the original rehab of the old Marriott School Auditorium and making it into a playhouse. Some of that money has been in there for as long as some of us have almost been alive, you know, so. Yeah, I think that, I think JJ and Keith and Marie, I think, are hearing the message.
Yes, we'll look into that and get back to you with a little more guidelines, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, alright.
Are there any additional questions on this item?
Yeah, I was trying to, but my mic was off. I think Mr. Kang was hearing me, but anyway, that, we, for fiscal year 2021, adopted was 5,736,000 and change in the black. And then the FY 2021 adjusted is 5,212,710 in the red, and the difference is 5,789,080 in the red. And I suppose that transformation took place because of these adjustments? And why, why did that happen?
I think it has to do with accounting methodology. So we actually ran into the, I guess, treatment of accounting difference between, without getting into too much technical issues, whether or not we should treat the gross-up-in-kind money as part of the gross receipt versus net amount. That was an issue, that's why there was a swing in dollar amount between two years. And that's pretty much the, I guess, common sense term, common sense way of explaining why that happened.
Okay, now, is it?
Yeah.
Is it necessary to transfer any money in to account for this negative adjustment?
No, there's no cash transfer.
So it's just an accounting, as you pointed out, it's just an accounting procedure?
Accounting.
Accounting procedure?
Okay, is that, we'll kind of go down the line, Ms. Bettencourt, anything else? Mr. Bishop?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Correa?
I just want to acknowledge and thank staff for the work that has been put onto this document and for answering my questions on the adrenous areas. I looked at those numbers, and I thank you guys for working so hard on this issue and answering the questions that I had, I appreciate it, and thanks for the good work, everybody.
Mr. Loa?
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Brown? Anything?
No comment.
Alright, and Ms. Fragasans?
No comment.
Okay, alright, so do I have a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file, this is one.
Second, Bettencourt.
Okay, Laura Bettencourt, second, Moncoria, motion, roll call?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chair Bettencourt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loa?
Yes.
Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Commissioner Fragasans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so I got, I understand we have some consultants and stuff sitting online, and we were asked to move 2023, so we'll adjourn the Housing Authority meeting and reconvene the City Council portion of the meeting. And this was on, I think, item 20?
20.3, Mayor.
Okay, sir, okay, go ahead, who's gonna handle this one?
Mr. Lucha.
This could be Mr. Lucha?
Yes, it is. Mayor, members of the City Council, the item in this record is.
Real quick, I'm sorry.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, I know, he's going, we're full reading of resolutions and ordinances on the agenda tonight.
So, Loa.
Loa, second?
Second.
Bettencourt, second, roll call both, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ben, that was my fault.
No problem.
We jump around on the agenda that, I gotta, I gotta try to, gotta script out and don't want to screw up anything else, so go ahead, sir.
Sure. Mayor, members of the City Council, the item is Resolution Number CC 2021-016, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale approving the execution of a letter of credit and filing of advice letter to satisfy the financial security requirement, filing of the initial renewable portfolio standard procurement plan, and filing of the year-ahead resource adequacy forecast. As mentioned in the title, if approved by Council, the city's community trace aggregation program, which is Energy for Palmdale Independent Choice, or EPIC, will be completed and submitted, well, we will complete and submit the following prior to the April 2021 deadline. It would be a letter of credit in the amount of $147,000, filing of an advice letter to the California Public Utilities Commission for compliance, and the California Public Utilities Commission is often referred to as the CPUC, and we would be giving them our financial security requirement information, filing of EPIC's initial renewable portfolio standards procurement plan, filing of EPIC's year-ahead resource adequacy forecast, and recertification of EPIC as a community trace aggregation program. All of the documents must be completed and executed if EPIC intends to launch in October 2022 for residential and municipal services and May of 2023 for commercial services. Failure to submit prior to the April deadline will cause the initial launch date to be postponed to 2023 at the earliest. However, with the submittal, there are no more off-ramps, and the program must launch by the outlined dates. As CCAs launch across the state and customers leave investor-owned utilities, the CPUC allows the IOUs to charge exit fees to reimburse for long-term energy contracts. Due to high exit fees, which are known as power charge indifference adjustments, or PCIA charges, the impact of COVID-19 and other issues affecting the energy market, most CCAs are seeing themselves having to raise rates above parity with the IOUs. However, with the potential renewable partnerships currently being assessed, the city may be able to launch EPIC at rate parity and to maintain rate parity for approximately. the city may be able to launch EPIC at rate parity and to maintain rate parity for approximately three years based on current rate forecast models by CalTrace, EPIC's expert consultants on all CCA matters. If scenarios continue as they are after three years and annually thereafter, the council will need to reevaluate EPIC's rate structure to ensure its long-term sustainability. EPIC will also leave the city poised to pursue other grant projects and programs to bring added value to the community. Staff recommends approving the resolution. Public Works Staff, JJ Marie, along with Jason Cottle and Barbara Boswell with CalTrace, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Alright, um, so let's go down, Ms. Bentoncourt, you have anything?
I just need someone to explain to the public once again the benefit to them for this endeavor.
Ben, is that you, or JJ, are you gonna grab that?
I'll grab it. We are looking at, at this CCA endeavor is a holistic approach that, uh, going down this route and looking at our neighbors in Lancaster who've run a very successful program, this will afford opportunities for us to partner with, uh, developers, with businesses who wanna relocate into our community. And our residents might be afforded a reduced, a reduction in their home costs with, uh, potential solar partners. So with all those reasons and a litany of others, and it will also help us compete with, for grant money that today the City of Palmdale does not compete. We think going down this route, especially with the federal administration that just went in, that's gonna be very green energy friendly, we think this is a proper time to enter this energy, uh, partnership.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did that answer your question?
Yeah, so thank you.
Okay, uh, just kinda going down the line here, uh, Mr. Bishop?
Uh, no, that, that answered my question as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Creo?
I just want to add that this can be a, an additional benefit to the economic development of the city. Because if, um, big consumption developers, like the aerospace industry and others, uh, high-speed rail or any other industry that relies on energy, can potentially, um, benefit from big rate reductions. I know that at the beginning it may not seem, uh, such a savings if a resident is gonna save fifty cents or a dollar, whatever the case may be. But when you look at the consumption of those big, uh, enterprises, that could make a big difference. I think that this can be attractive, uh, to bring other, other types of industries. And I know that other, uh, cities and jurisdictions and counties are actually still entertaining this idea, like Orange County. They are forming an Orange County consortium, I, I don't know the name, uh, but they are forming an entire county, just like LA County did. And with this, uh, you know, it, it's, uh, small steps, but I think that not only our residents will benefit from a rate reduction, but also from the potential economic development, job creation, uh, and those things. Keep in mind that, uh, the electric vehicle, uh, mode is growing every day. More and more people are driving electric vehicles, and that can also motivate, uh, those, uh, companies to maybe come up here and create those battery plants, uh, that can, uh, provide the energy for the future, which is actually now, electric vehicles. Uh, again, I, I think that this is a good thing for us to keep involved in, uh, and at the right time. It would make sense for us to move on and with, uh, staff's, uh, recommendations and, and the leadership on all of the cities that are part of this, uh, CCA, uh, with the City of Lancaster and others, as far as Montevideo and other cities that are part of, or are actually now part of the, the, the CCA. So I, again, I, I, I see a lot of benefits, uh, besides having, uh, residents and, and, and business, uh, community benefit from it.
Thanks, Juan, and, and speaking of that.
Just in the first place.
Yeah, and speaking of that point, I think it's really important that we also, uh, explore the use of green energy and alternative energies, because that really is gonna be the way for the future, is, uh, how we conserve and, and how we really set ourselves, set the stage for the future as far as resources and energy consumption. That's been kind of the name of the game for a while now, and I know it's becoming even a bigger issue in the state moving forward.
Yeah, I agree, Austin, and, and my, my concern is this, it doesn't really matter how cheap the energy is if we can't get it to our residents' homes, and we saw this in Texas when the entire system went down. While we agreed to do this, I would like for us to have a conversation in the, in the near future about the possible creation of some mini-grids so that we can get this cheap power to, um, our residents if there should be some type of a catastrophic failure from our current provider. Because I don't think what the public understands is while you're paying for cheaper energy, it's still coming across Southern California Edison's, um, power grid. And we can't control that, as, as far as I know. So I don't know if it's possible to have mini-grids throughout the city so that we don't go completely dark like Texas did and, you know, that type of a situation. I, I really don't know if we can do that, but if there's any way that we could take some of the money that is, is made in this business that we're endeavoring into to look at that as a possibility, um, we don't know what Southern California Edison's gonna do. We don't know how, how, how they're gonna maintain the, the grid. And like you said, more people are using more energy, uh, more people are getting electric cars. And do we have a grid system that could support that, that usage? So many grids will be very helpful to our community. It's just a thought, I just wanna put it out there.
Yeah, that's always a, uh, the micro-grid system is what, uh.
Right, yeah, micro-grid, sorry.
Look at, uh, that depends on batteries. I know that there's, uh, there's some, um, uh, there's, there's some proposals out there that are looking at, uh, some battery facilities, uh, or, uh, to, they've already got one up in, uh, Tehachapi. It's a huge facility up there. So, um, you know, when you start talking micro-grids, unless you got a power plant of some kind, that's basically what you're talking about is, is, is battery storage and things like that. So, um, yeah, that's, that's all, all great points. Okay, uh.
Do you mind if I make a point?
City Clerk, was there any, uh, additional, uh, was there any public comment on this item?
Mayor, can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard.
I think all of the points that have been made are very positive.
Already thinking, a couple of guys already there, go ahead, sir.
I think all of the points that have been made are very positive, uh, in support of this. And, uh, I think one of the, uh, things that I, that I'm very impressed with is the fact that, uh, uh, the City of Lancaster has sort of shown the way on how this can be savings to, uh, developers that we're trying to attract to our area and, uh, also enhance our housing stock. So, uh, it's working out. It's been kind of a painful process. It's been, uh, a while that this has been going on, but I think that we found a key to, uh, monetizing this and, uh, and making it very, uh, successful for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, City Clerk, was there, uh, any public comment on twenty point three?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number CC two zero two one dash zero one six.
Richard Loa, I guess, uh, move to, uh, to adopt.
Second, Juan Carrillo.
Okay, I have a motion by Loa, second by, uh, Carrillo. Any further discussion or call for a question?
Mayor Hoff, Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bentoncourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Item carries, um, so, uh, item number sixteen, public comment, uh, on consent calendar items. We had a, a single speaker? Rosie something or other, I think, I'm sorry, I didn't write that name down.
This is the time for the public participation. If you are attending the meeting by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. If attending by personal computer, please click the raise your hand button, press star six to unmute, state your name and begin speaking.
Good evening, my name is Rosie Manella. I'm here representing the Council for Prevention of Child Abuse, a firm here in the Antelope Valley. And I was just, uh, wanting to let you guys know that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. So we would like to request, uh, a proclamation for the month of April. If this is not the appropriate time, let me know when it is and I will make that happen. We also wanted to.
Send us, send, send me over a, uh, an email and I'll, I'll send it over to the, uh, staff and we can, uh, have something generated for you on that.
Sounds great.
There's some background to me.
Very good, we'll do. The second part of that is that, um, being that it's Child Abuse Awareness Month, we wanted to kick it off with a show of solidarity for children by standing side by side, six feet apart from one another on, uh, an avenue or a street of our choosing, kinda like when we do our, uh, winter parade. The same kinda thing, but six feet apart from each other with, uh, signs, with positive messages to send off our commuters to work or welcome them home. And we, I was hoping, we were hoping, that the City of Palmdale will be a part of this process.
Sounds, uh, sounds like an outstanding suggestion. Again, send us over the info and we'll have the staff disseminate that and we'll get back and we'll, we'll coordinate that with you.
Sounds great, thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you very much. If we could put that out of business, that would be an outstanding goal to achieve.
Yeah, we would, uh, not have drug problems either, if we can take that out of business.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Mayor, we have two e-commerce that are, um, for agenda, items not listed on the agenda.
Okay, City Attorney, do you wanna handle those items, sir?
Yes, I can read them into the record. Uh, the first from a guest user. Why is it that Richard Loa has a clearly illegal sign in front of his law office on Palmdale Boulevard? Does he get away with it because he had a promotional piece on his friend the mayor for the last three years? Did the lawyer councilman get a city permit or does he make his own rules? Will you procure the signed permit, councilor, or take it down? Asking for all the business owners who abide by the rule. Next is from a guest user. Hello, City Council and Personnel. I hope this comment finds you all well. The purpose for this comment is to express my gratitude in the support New Colors Project has been receiving. I am eighteen years old and CEO of a successful youth-led nonprofit. We have strong partnerships, in fact, recently approved to work with local courthouse to provide meaningful community service opportunities to those at risk. Thank you to the city and its beautiful residents. With love, Ramiro Gomez Gallegano, Romans eight twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, we have one more speaker on the line.
Okay, uh, Speaker, uh, tell us who we are and, uh, is there, is this on a consent calendar item or non-agendized?
Non-agendized.
Okay, uh, three minutes, but you don't have to take it all.
Oh, yes, Eugene Hernandez, voter, Green Party. Uh, I would like to ask the City Council of Palmdale to terminate its contract with the Los Angeles Tech County Sheriff's for the following reasons. The Los Angeles Times has docked a minute, three hundred sheriffs, which are still on the payroll, who have committed crimes ranging from murder to child abuse to domestic violence. Javier Barceram of the Biden Administration has made it his goal to investigate the Los Angeles County Sheriff's out of all the law enforcement agencies because of its brutality, corruptness, and ineptitude. The Los Angeles County Sher, uh, supervisors have all agreed that Alex Villanueva is incompetent and should resign, even our supervisor Catherine Barger. Uh, they're, we as taxpayers have to pay for the crimes of the sheriffs. When they kill Andres Guardano, their eighteen-year-old, who was shot in the back five times, the Los Angeles County Sheriff refused to testify at his inquest. They have also killed the black man, Kizzy, of South Central. Uh, these crimes the sheriffs have gone on. They assassinated Ruben Salazar in nineteen seventy. We as taxpayers have to pay for the civil cost of the sheriff's department has done that Alex, Alex Villanueva was kicked out of COVID, kicked out of the COVID task force for incompetence. Lately, he has tried to build a helicopter pad near his house at taxpayer expense. I think that the time has come to bring them to justice. If not, uh, an outright termination of their contract, there should be a civilian police review board in Palmdale. And also I have one more point. If you're only meeting once a month, shouldn't your salaries be cut in half? And don't tell me because you work on committees, but that, that's an affront to the taxpayer if you're only meeting once a month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, City Clerk, is that it? Silence is golden.
Sorry, Mayor, I believe that City Attorney has one additional email? No, no, that's it for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Know that there was a, uh, an email that was circulated on the dais about, uh, uh, I'm trying to find my stack here, uh, I think it was at the park.
Hi, hi, Mayor, this is Lynn Glidden and councilmembers, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we're, we're still finishing up the, uh, public comment here, Lynn.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, uh.
Mayor, Mayor of the council, Mayor of the council, how's that?
The email has been distributed to this entire City Council and is available for review. Does that, that, does that take care of it, uh?
Yes.
Yeah, my, my concern with that email, as with others, is that because there was personally identifying information there, had they not specified it as public comment, uh, not to include in the record so as to not betray the trust of the person communicating. And that, I think that's okay with the council, we're good.
That's great. Okay, um, and, uh, number, uh, seventeen, uh, I think we're pulling seventeen point three uh, because there is a brief presentation on that. Does the council, did the council want to, uh, pull any other items or is there a motion to approve the consent calendars comprised other than seventeen point three?
Second by Juan.
Okay, and somebody's mic wasn't on, who made the motion?
Yeah, I made it, sorry about that, uh, move to approve, uh, number seventeen consent calendar except for seventeen point three.
Thank you, that's like the new, um, you know, can you hear me now, so. Thank you very much. I have a motion to second, uh, City Clerk.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bentoncourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Lynn or Chuck?
Hi, hi, everyone, this is Lynn Glidden with the City of Palmdale. Um, we pulled seventeen point three because this is one of our projects that we have a notice of completion on and it's, it's a really big change. It's our Dominic Masari sidewalk repair project. I'm gonna share my screen, so this is the first time I've done this, so let's see if it all works.
Yeah, was fifteen-year-old there to help you with this?
I have my husband.
My wife would tell you that qualifies.
So do you, do you see the screen with the slide?
We're seeing it.
Okay, so this is PN seven seven five. So this is an overview of the project that, the Orange Legend shows the work that was done in place. Next slide. There we go. The north pedestrian pathway, you can see before and after where the sidewalk was. And in this instance, we actually put in DG because when we were taking out the sidewalk, the, the tree roots were so high that putting back in sidewalk was, was not gonna be an effective, um, um, work. Next slide is the west pedestrian. This one, we actually, you can see where it was all very cracked before. It's all replaced now and nice and clean. South pedestrian, again, cracked sidewalk, replaced with, we shortened, we shortened up the width of the sidewalk. It's still within ADA requirements, but then added some DG on the sides of it. And the last one is the softball field interior pathway, where we just basically cleaned up a lot of the trip hazards that we were having and, um, we'll make it a better walking environment. So that's all for me. Um, project was a little over budget, but we, um, were able to do a supplemental last, last month or a month ago. So, that's it for me, thank you.
Austin, it looks really good out there. That's where I take my, uh, my, my grandkids, uh, is out there. Uh, it's one of the, it's probably one of the finest, uh, playgrounds around and it's like, uh, Mayberry out there with the additional, uh, security measures and stuff, so. Alright, do I have the, uh, a, a, any, uh, any questions or comments or motion? Alright, do we have the, uh, a, a, any, uh, any questions or comments or a motion?
Just wanna comment that it really does make a big, uh, difference, uh, the way it looks now. Uh, makes it a lot safer for, uh, you know, kids to be walking and adults. I, I tend to go there too, uh, to, to walk sometimes and I noticed how deteriorating the concrete was. Uh, thanks staff for doing such a wonderful job. Uh, and just as a side note, this was a, a CWA project that created jobs for, for, uh, our members. Uh, and I think it's, it's a great improvement and it really does, uh, look a lot nicer. Uh, thank you, staff.
Yeah, likewise, I just, anytime we make, um, improvements to our, our city parks, it's, it's a good day. We have a lot of people that enjoy going to that park. Uh, it's, it's one of the biggest parks on that side of town, so thank you guys for, uh, taking the initiative to, to give it the much-needed upgrade.
Thank you, everyone.
I say just as far as public accessibility, without, uh, uh, seasonal or, um, uh, uh, pay-per-use type stuff, I think that is hard, so. Alright, is there a motion?
So moved, moved to approve it, Loa.
Second, this is one.
Motion by Mr. Loa?
Second, Carrillo.
Second by Mr. Carrillo? City clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Ye- yes.
Thank you.
Alright, item carries. Uh, we go to item number eighteen, we have eighteen point one, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Mayor, this is the item that I, uh, requested to be moved after fourteen, nineteen point four. If, if that's, uh, okay with the rest of the council or if I need to make a motion? I'm hearing from the city attorney that I need to make a motion to have item eighteen point one to be moved after nineteen point four.
I'll second the motion if you're making the motion, Juan.
I did, thank you.
Mayor, please, uh, turn your mic on, we can't hear you.
All, uh, alright, well, I guess there's a motion, uh, do I, um, uh, city clerk, uh, I guess call, call, call the, uh, motion.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, keep watching. So we're gonna go ahead and move that and we'll go into public hearings. Nineteen point one, who's handling that one?
Megan Taggart from Pliny.
Megan Taggart, thank you.
Of course. Um, so this item, I will start by reading the ordinance into the record. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale to modify Palmdale Municipal Code Chapter seventeen point seven six land use matrix, it's ZOA twenty-one dash zero zero five.
Counsel, uh, any questions or Megan, did you have a presentation you're getting?
I do, sorry, I was waiting for you to, uh, make a motion on the ordinance.
The voice vote to introduce.
So, uh, introduce the ordinance, uh, you have a, you have a motion on that?
Motion to introduce a motion, this is, uh, Juan.
Mr. Carrillo, do I have a second?
Second, Bettencourt.
Bettencourt, second, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, uh, the motion carries. Uh, we're gonna open a public hearing, do we have anything on nineteen point one?
No comments at this time, mayor.
Okay, motion to close public hearing, please?
So moved, this is one.
Carrillo? I need a second?
Second, Bettencourt.
Bettencourt, second, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, Megan, did you have something you wanted to brief us on here with this item?
I do. Um, so this item, uh, zoning ordinance amendment twenty-one dash zero zero five is a request to modify Chapter seventeen point seventy-six, which is the land use matrix. Um, due to, um, new business types and other things that evolve over time, it's important to take a look at this matrix and add or modify uses as necessary. Um, so this particular amendment, uh, seeks to, um, allow the establishment of civic, social, and service and labor organizations within the public facility zone and also allow the establishment of warehousing of materials within the M four zone. And that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, that's my cue to, thank you, Megan. Counsel?
I have a question on the warehousing of materials. I'm sure that there is going to be, um, a, a close look at any potential proposed warehousing of hazardous materials, correct? That's not an open slate for storage of any material. Um, since the, you know, hazardous materials can just be, uh, something that could potentially um, be dangerous in, in any, any neighborhood. Uh, so just wanna make sure that hazardous materials will be, uh, something that is just not gonna be approved uh, without going through, uh, a CUP process, uh, not seeing what the, the application required will be. Uh, but again, can, can you elaborate a little bit on that, uh, Megan?
Certainly. So this is only related to, um, uses that do not require a use permit of, in other sections of the code. So, sorts of hazardous materials, manufacturing of certain items require a use permit. Um, so this is just a blanket warehousing and storage for any, um, uses and goods that do not require a use permit somewhere else.
Thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Taggart? It looks very cold where you are. Thank you for your report.
Yes.
Or a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve, I like that, uh, it offers, uh, a little bit more flexibility.
Second, Loa.
I have a motion to second, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, nineteen two. This is, uh, city attorney Beck, public hearing ordinance number fifteen sixty. Staff to read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you, your honor. This is ordinance number fifteen sixty, an ordinance of the city of Palmdale continuing a temporary suspension of section five point oh four point six seven oh. Paragraph H sub four of the Palmdale Municipal Code prohibiting the sale of flavored electronic cigarette products.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I need a, uh, motion to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion?
Second, this is one.
Bishop, I think, was seconding that? Okay, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, city clerk, do we have any, uh, public comment on, uh, the, uh, on nineteen point two?
Not at this time.
Very good, motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second, Carrillo.
I have a second, please?
Second, Carrillo.
Okay, I have a motion, second, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
So I can give just a brief report on it then, uh, before we take the vote, it, this is just, we had a stay on the prohibition of sales of flavored electronic cigarettes through February of twenty twenty-one. This extends it for a year to February twenty twenty-two, all the state works out their game. Quite simply.
Excellent, and then, uh, makes the state the defendant.
Correct.
I like that. I like to move forward with it, but not paying out that kind of money. Any else? Or a motion?
I don't know who's gonna talk, but Mr. Beck, uh, what is the current status as far as statewide, um, sales of flavored tobacco?
It's technically at the point where it's stayed pending a referendum, uh, not referendum, uh, initiative process that looks like it'll come through in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so at present, it, it continues to be sold by the retail outlets?
Correct, because the attempt to stop it has been stayed pending the initiative.
Okay, and we're suspending our ordinance because?
For the same reason, because it's, it hasn't been tested yet, and so rather than, uh, muddling the, into the waters, right, as the test case.
Okay, so could, if we continued with, uh, the ordinance, it could, uh, expose the city to some litigation?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? I, I just, uh, would like to, uh, reinforce that, um, the council had asked that the code enforcement work with the retailers, make it abundantly clear to them that, uh, we really desire their cooperation uh, in making sure these products are not being sold to underage individuals, uh, and failing to do so. Uh, there's not gonna be, uh, a lot of sympathy, so.
Mayor, that has been, uh, already communicated to the code enforcement staff.
Just putting it on the record. Anybody else for a motion?
Motion to approve, Carrillo?
This is, uh, Austin, second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have a, uh, second, city clerk, please?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop? We can't hear you.
Bishop? Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now? It's crazy. Alright, nineteen three, uh, public hearing of, of review of proposed ordinance, uh, fifteen sixty-two, staff attorney, uh, staff, uh, reference city attorney Beck?
Thank you, your honor. For the reading of the ordinance title, it's ordinance number fifteen sixty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale. Amending the Palmdale Municipal, Municipal Code Section two point oh four point one hundred regarding procedure for removal of the city manager.
Okay, uh, voice vote to introduce the ordinance, do I have a motion to introduce it?
Motion carries, Carrillo?
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Carrillo?
I didn't, I said carries, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Uh, Carrillo and then Bettencourt was that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
No.
And councilmember Bishop?
No.
Yeah, this, this was just to introduce the ordinance for a public hearing.
You got the motion carried.
You guys don't want a public hearing on that? Okay, uh, alright, so it carries three two, uh, city clerk, any public hearing? Request on this?
Public comments?
You have a public comment?
No, sir, none at this time.
Okay, makes the, makes that move then, uh, so motion to close public hearing, please?
So moved, Carrillo.
Juan Carrillo? I need a second?
I'll second.
Laura Bettencourt, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes, yeah, I, 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 uh, I wasn't aware that was for the public hearing, I would have voted yes for the public hearing.
Okay, um, so the staff recommendation is adopt the ordinance number fifteen sixty-two. Uh, amending the Palmdale Municipal Code Section two point oh four dot one zero zero. Um, anything further or a motion?
I'd like to make a comment, I can make it after the motion if you wish.
I'll make the person to adopt?
I'll make this second, but I believe Mr. Loa wanted to make a comment.
Right, I, I, my microphone is on.
Oh, sorry.
At the beginning, that's fine, um, Mayor Pro Tim. The, um, the issue that's being brought-
Was, was there, was there a second or not?
Yes.
There was, by Carrillo, yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Richard.
The, um, this matter was, uh, brought to us with the intent and purpose of, uh, uh, making sure that a, a good city manager such as the one we have, uh, have, uh, assurance that, uh, that he will be able to remain in that position without uh, being affected by, uh, by the, uh, changing political, uh, status of, uh, of the city council. And that's, uh, all, all to the good. Uh, originally, uh, a, there was a proposal to bring this four-fifths, uh, vote, in other words, to change the ordinance from three-fifths to four-fifths. And there was discussion about that and, uh, there was then a decision to, um, make a trade-off of some, uh, increased economic benefit to the city manager, uh, and not go to the four-fifths vote. Well, that was adopted, the result of that is, uh, that, uh, the city council voted to approve a mortgage or to assist, uh, give, uh, essentially a loan that would be coming from, uh, the general fund. And so the result of that is that the city manager then obtains the economic benefit and he, uh, receives the benefit of having a four-fifths vote. Yeah, I want to state for the record that I believe that, uh, there have not, there has never been a city manager that has been discharged even by a three-fifths vote. And I think that it is unnecessary to both provide a four-fifths vote and to also provide a substantial mortgage to the city manager plus um, a severance package that is very attractive. All of that together, I believe is beyond what we ought to be doing to protect the city of Palmdale. Recently, we had, uh, the city manager and the mayor, and indeed all of us asking the, the voters of the city to approve AV measure. And, uh, we did everything we could to assure the public, the voting public in particular, that we would be careful with that increase that would be coming to the general fund for the city. Now, not even six months after that vote, we have completely betrayed if this ordinance passes the trust that was provided to this council that we would be careful with the funds that are going to be generated by Measure AV. We haven't even adopted the commission that's going to review the appropriateness of the expenditures of revenues that are generated by Measure AV. And here we are, giving an extremely lucrative contract to our city manager. I will repeat, I believe our city manager is doing a great job. I just don't believe that we need to give away the house, give away the ranch because I believe that the consequence in just looking at the severance package, the benefit that would be achieved by the severance package should be at this incentive to any council member in trying to remove him, much less two other ones. I think the protections are there. I think that, uh, that this entire package is just too much. I was on the council from two thousand one to two thousand five when we had Bob Toon who managed to survive the political winds of the time and managed to survive for, I believe, twenty-six-plus years with councils that were elected to remove him. And he was not removed, he was not removed, I believe, because in the end, Mr. Toon was able to demonstrate that he was going to bring about great achievements for the city of Palmdale, and in fact, there were many great achievements that were accomplished during the tenure of Mr. Toon. In fact, much of what we see of a of a beautiful Palmdale today, the AV mall, much of the development that we've seen, some of the specific plans that we have, housing developments that are very attractive, the development of Forty Seventh Street East, many of those things, the development of Avenue S to the east side, many of those things were accomplished during Mr. Toon's tenure. And I think that, that Mr. Murphy has that same capacity. I think he has the energy, the insight, the intelligence, and certainly the background and his, uh, history is demonstrating that he's able to also accomplish great things for the city of Palmdale, and I think we're on the, on the, um, edge of really moving the city forward, and I think the city manager is going to help us do that. That being said, this is simply too much. It's too much. He gets the four fifths vote, and if tonight this is, uh, adopted by an ordinance, we're going to encase this contract by an ordinance, which is what's being requested here. Now, I've been told that in order to change this ordinance, all it would require would be a three fifths vote in order to change a four fifths contract. I'm not convinced that's the case, but I believe seriously that if an attempt were made to change the ordinance back to three fifths, that it would be opening the door for a lawsuit on the behalf of of a city manager, I'm not speaking specifically about this one in this situation, because that is now being encased in an ordinance. It is my understanding that in order for the four fifths vote portion of the contract, and I believe other portions of it, the portion of the contract that guarantees the city manager's position, unless he has four members that would vote against him, the contract is contingent, that is to say, it's conditioned on the adoption of this ordinance. So I don't understand how, in order to have this four fifths agreement and the agreement underlying it with the city manager, that we could then undo it by changing the ordinance with a three fifths vote. That hasn't been clarified in my mind, and that is, I think, a potential problem with this ordinance. I have voted no, I certainly want to keep, uh, Mr. Murphy here, I want him to be happy, but again, I state, this is too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Could I, uh, um, well, you know what, I'll, uh, Ms. Bettencourt, you have anything?
I got lots to say. So first, let me say that, um, Measure AV money is not unrestricted funds, we actually wrote that into the policy so that the money could not be spent on salaries. So I believe that Mr. Loa is mistaken to say that we're taking money from Measure AV funds and putting it into the the salary of our city manager.
May I make a correction, please, I'm talking about the very substantial loan that is being provided, that money is not salary, that money is money taken from the general fund in order to provide a loan to the city manager.
It it's not coming.
I don't I don't know that that that's not the issue that's on the table right now, so I think Laura was addressing the four fifths issue, so.
It's not coming out of Measure AV money.
It's coming out of the general fund, though.
Okay, can can I talk?
Yeah, let's.
Let let me have a a some.
Yes.
Here, I I waited very patiently while Mr. Loa spoke, and and I know that his his opinions are very heartfelt. I think he's somewhat misguided. Comparing, um, a city manager from decades ago to a city manager now with the climate of our society, with social media and trolls and all the the different ways that our society has changed, you can't compare what a city manager goes through now to what a city manager went through then. I have personally been on five separate councils, and I have seen the last two councils beat the hell out of our city managers emotionally. We dangled Mr. Perdi's job over him every single meeting that we had, and that is no way for a person to live. That's why I voted in favor of the four fifths vote, and, um, that would have not cost the city anything, and you guys voted against it originally, um, and we and had we voted originally for the four fifths, uh, vote, we would not have even negotiated a mortgage, so. Um, we have to give our city managers some comfort when they're dealing with a council who turns over every twenty four months, you've got three people running, and at the, I think we've shown in the last several elections that some politicians will stop at nothing to win, and it doesn't have to be factual, true, or or honest, and why would we want to put our city manager through that? If somebody's trying to make a name for themselves, and they get together, and they run a campaign of three, and they've made an agreement with the people that funded them to get rid of the city manager, we have to, if we want to move the city forward, we have to prove that we're secure, that we have a city manager who is gonna stay and who isn't gonna be removed in the middle of a project or some major, you you know, endeavor that the city has embarked on, we have to have that stability, and our track record has not been good. Look how many city managers we have been through, okay? So if we give the man peace of mind by a four fifths vote, I have no problem with that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am, uh, Mr. Carrillo?
I do have to, um, say that I do respect, uh, Mr. Loa's sentiments and heartfelt comments, but I do feel the need to address, uh, the distrust, uh, of the residents and voters on Measure AV. Um, as stated, it is a measure that was passed by the voters for a specific use, and that specific use is listed in the measure itself. And, um, you know, I I do recall, even though Mr. Loa voted to put the measure on the ballot, I do recall seeing literature from his campaign telling citywide constituents not to vote for Measure AV. Um, I vividly remember seeing a couple of literature, um, being sent out.
May I may I respond?
So I I think that, uh.
May I respond to that, Mr. Carrillo?
You you can answer after I'm done.
Yeah, we'll we'll do that, we'll do that in a minute here, let me just go go through each one of these, uh, so we, uh, otherwise you're just getting to a, uh.
So I I don't believe that in any form, way, or shape, we are, um, telling our voters that we're gonna use their, our money, their trust in us to pay a salary of a city employee, um. Uh, I think that, um, again, he even stated that he feels that Mr. Murphy's doing an excellent job, we all feel the same way. But again, look at the last, um, cycle of elections since two thousand sixteen, uh, where, as stated, candidates will do whatever it takes, lie, distrust, defamation. I remember being called all kinds of names, and that those names in Spanish sounds just a, just a little more uh, awful, uh, than they are in English. And and they were lies. I mean, that's that's the nature of this political atmosphere that we live in, and it is a shame that it is done even at the local level when all we do is really put our time to serve our community. We get a stipend, yeah, but, I mean, what, seven hundred fifty six dollars and two hundred dollars for car allowance? It is not close to the amount of time that we all spend and the sacrifices that we do and our families make so that we can serve our community. So again, I just want to, um, let the the voters know that I do disagree that we are losing the trust that you put on, uh, voting in Measure AV, because again, the the money generated is listed for a specific use. Um, yeah, it it is, it is a salary that the city manager has, and there are good incentives, the housing incentive is a good incentive, but it's an investment. The city has investments and the city gets.
Well, I'm just, just for clarification, I think the only item up for discussion.
No, that's fine, uh, okay.
Four fifths vote, I think we keep, we're going off on a lot of tangents, and it's generating quite a bit of, uh.
Okay. Well, again, my my main point was to let voters know that the trust on Measure AV, I don't think that it excesses, um, and with that, I'll I'll close by saying that, yeah, we all, all five of us have said plenty of times that we are happy with the work, uh, Mr. Murphy has performed, and this is just something that is not unusual, by the way, many other cities provide these type of incentives. Um, so, well, again, I just wanted to, uh, address that comment about the distrust.
I'd like to, uh, make a response, um, first of all, uh, the only place that, uh, the only place that, uh, in literature that, uh, uh, my name was on the same propaganda, uh, that included a a statement against AV was on Slate Mailers, and you don't have any control, when you purchase a Slate Mailer, you don't have any control over the things that go on there, in fact, uh, you may have gone on some Slate Mailers that you're in disagreement with. The Measure AV, and correct me if I'm wrong, is going to alleviate the pressure because of the downturn in the economy given, uh, COVID, and it's going to alleviate other elements in the budget and therefore make it easier uh, to spend money in the way that's being proposed here. The money here is not for salary, it's to take money from the general fund and put it into a mortgage, and that's fine.
We're off topic again.
Yeah, we're we're off topic here again, so if we could just, uh, 'cause we're gonna get plenty of time to discuss the the other issues, if we could just try to focus the discussion on the on the item that's at hand, because, um.
All right, I got I got it, mayor. A comment has been made that, uh, there was a city manager from decades ago, it's not just that city manager, but that city manager transformed the city from what it was in the, uh, late seventies and early eighties into much of what it has become today, and believing that political winds at that time were no less severe than they are now, and yet that city manager survived. But after him came several city man, several minute city managers, none of whom were dismissed by a three fifths vote. And I think that it's unnecessary to include an in ordinance, a removal of the city manager by a four fifths vote. I believe that this probably also ties the hands of future city councils and may have unintended consequences in terms of removing a city manager, not necessarily the one we've got today, as I've said, I think it's doing a good job, I just think this is too much. But I think there's unintended consequences to moving to a four fifths vote. Thank you very much for your time, sorry, Ms. Bettencourt, for having interrupted you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, okay, so trying to keep this focused on the topic at hand, uh, I don't see this as much. Um, I was initially, um, was not in favor of this, but, um, over the last couple of months, I have, uh, my my position on it had changed, um, 'cause I I look back at other boards and agencies uh, that we have up here, and with the external and internal, uh, issues that were going on, um, the, uh, those agencies were having a very difficult time, uh, with bonds, with their underwriters, with insurance, uh.
I thought we were gonna keep it to a four fifths vote.
Nature. Uh, because of the, uh, because of what was perceived to be a certain level of political instability uh, with their administration as generated by their board. I don't want to see us go through that, uh, here, uh, I want to make sure that, uh, that the message is abundantly clear that when, uh, the city manager is, um, speaking, uh, on our behalf, uh, he's out at the other agencies, that he is the city manager, not the city manager this week. So, uh, that's that was, that weighed quite heavily, uh, you know, into my decision to, uh, uh, to change. I look at this more as helping to create a, um, a stability issue, uh, and if he screws up bad enough, man, he's he's gonna get the axe, so I think that, uh, it just, it it, you know, uh, every two years, you you have the ability to turn over this entire council, and we've seen that in other boards, what's happened, and it just is, it's been ugly, so I'd like us to try to put all the, um, ugliness behind us, and, uh, if this is, uh, one of the things it's gonna take to try to, uh, help stabilize things and move us, uh, forward in a productive and, uh, um, adult manner, I think I'm I'm all for that, so. Uh, there's, unless there's something new or different, I'd entertain a motion on the item.
I'd like to say, uh, just one 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 last comment, please, um. Our purpose in being on the city council is to protect the interest of the taxpayers and the residents of the city. It is not necessarily to protect the interest of the city manager, I think he's getting substantial protection besides this four fifths vote.
Just just to speak on, just to speak on this for a minute, and this is a tough one, 'cause there's a lot of good points being made. Um, as far as adopting this ordinance and changing city code, uh, I always take that very seriously because I have a huge respect for the way things are done in organization and the balance of power, and the fact that, uh, the city has been doing very, very well for many years, uh, working on on doing business with the three fifths vote, it just seems to be a balance of power issue. Uh, but, um, but yeah, I I take it seriously when we change ordinance like this, 'cause it could it could have an effect. But, you know, we also want to make sure we ensure stability and quality of life for our citizens.
I make a motion to approve this ordinance?
I second the motion, although I believe that we already have a first and a second.
Oh, okay, wasn't sure.
All right, uh, well, um, so did I, I'm looking at my notes here, did we, uh, uh, was there any public comment, or did we close the public comment on this?
Yes, we did close it, mayor, we had a first and a second by councilmember Carrillo, and the second was by Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt.
Okay, uh, thank you, I failed to, uh, scratch that off my list here, so that's what happens when you don't follow the system. All right, so I have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion or call for the vote?
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
No.
And councilmember Bishop.
No.
Motion carries, thank you.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Um, all right, we're moving on to, I think it's.
Nineteen four?
Nineteen four now.
Is it through eighteen or before or after? Do you want to re-poll?
Are you?
It's going afterwards.
I'm going to turn four. Okay, mayor and council, uh, I'd like to read the ordinance, this is a public hearing, review of proposed ordinance number fifteen sixty one for adoption, I'll read the ordinance. Ordinance number fifteen sixty one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale, amending the Palmdale municipal code, section two point zero eight point zero three zero regarding regarding appointments to boards and commissions by city council.
Okay, I need a motion to introduce ordinance number fifteen sixty one?
Make a motion?
Second, Carrillo.
Uh, second?
Yes, Carrillo.
Okay, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, city clerk, was there, uh, any public comment, um, for this, uh?
No, sir, not at this time.
I need a motion of closed public hearing, please?
So Carrillo.
Second.
All right, Carrillo and Bettencourt, city clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Loa.
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
All righty, um, is there any additional staff report or a motion or questions?
I have comments after the staff report. I have comments after the staff report.
Okay, Mayor? Is there any additional staff report needed?
I would just say, uh, that on January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, the city council directed staff to bring back an amendment to the Palmdale municipal code. Two point zero eight point zero three zero, that would allow each council member to nominate a member to a board or commission. We brought back, uh, these changes and I stand ready for questions, what is proposed is. That if the, moving forward, if there are boards, uh, future boards and commissions, that each council member would be able to nominate. Uh, one person, uh, the mayor would be able to nominate one person, if it's a board of five, if it's a board of seven, the mayor would nominate three people. If a person that's nominated by either council member or the mayor, uh, resigns. The replacement would be from the person who did the nomination, so for instance, if, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt nominated somebody who served and then resigned for whatever reason, or was taken off by a vote of the council. Ma- uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bettencourt would be able to, uh, replace that, if it's a board of seven and one of the mayor's three nominees. Uh, were to resign, it would be the mayor who brought forward names for the replacement. I stand ready for any questions that the council may have.
And these, uh, these are not restricted, uh, to the district that the council member is from?
They, these are not restricted, we wanted to write something because. Uh, we continue to have more boards and commissions, so for instance, like a public art committee has specific, uh, membership requirements.
Right.
There may not be a member in a said district, so we did not wanna write it restrictive, uh, but there are gonna be future, uh, committees that make sense to have somebody like a redistricting committee.
Right.
So we wanted to provide the council the flexibility in, in our, the proposed draft.
Right, and the, uh, maybe measure oversight commission would be another one like that? In other words, uh, it would be recommended that the council member nominate someone from their district?
Or?
In that particular one?
Well, or, or that has the requisite, requisite expertise to represent, for instance, if you wanted a veterans group represented. Or if you wanted, uh, the unions represented, or if you wanted, uh, youth sports organizations. And the, the leader did not happen to live in your district, you would have the flexibility. On, on that said board, uh, the, the intent would be to give council members. The ability to nominate somebody outside their respective districts.
Okay.
But, but this is kind of the general change to give that flexibility, uh, Attorney Becky, is, is that a fair reflection of what we're doing?
Yeah, and so it's, it's a least restricted means to do it, which I think is satisfactory in resolving that, I'm looking at the language now. And as I read it, we've probably read this fifteen, twenty times. I'm looking at, and this may be a clerical error that can be modified, it says. City council boards, commissions and committees shall consist of a minimum of five members, of whom shall be nominated by each city council member and the mayor. I think that may need to be adjusted to nominated by any city council mayor and/or the mayor, otherwise we'll take a nomination by each person who is presently reached now.
Right, and that's, that was the intent, uh, that each council member, uh, if you say any, then, then one council member. Can make that nomination across the board, what we're trying to have is each council member. Gets to bring forward a name and have a represent, representative, so if, if the wording needs to be, uh, amended. The intent was that each council member and the mayor. Get to bring forward a name that's gonna serve on the board, a council, the council can choose not to, uh, award that name. If they do, the council member, the said council member brings another name, it's not, if, if you don't like, uh, Councilman Loa's nominee. That you can say, well, we're not gonna second that and we're, then any member can make another nomination, no, what, how we wrote this, the intent was. Everybody that's serving on this dais gets input on the committees and boards moving forward.
Right, so in other words, if, if a member, uh, nominates someone, doesn't even get a second. Uh, that member would continue making nominations until he got one, or she got one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the language that is, that's being, um, modified here, Mr. City Attorney is. After the word members, this is in twen- two point zero eight point zero three zero subsection capital A. After the word members, add by any city council member?
Uh, on, with the clarification from the city manager, I see what the, the each is, so that it allows for. It, it does subjectively require that each member nominate as well as the mayor. The only thing I'd add then at the end is after and the mayor is comma, subject to approval of the city council, it seems that that's been removed in the amendment. It, it's, it's still, it's the intent that's been described, it's just we'll include it there for.
The first language you mentioned is, you're not, you're not, uh, suggesting that now, is that correct?
Uh, with the understanding and the clarification of what the representation is from staff, it seems to mirror what they've represented as their recommendation.
Okay, so but you would, you would be adding some words after the word mayor?
Yep, just subject to approval by the city council, I think it was inadvertently removed.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, we have a new public comment.
I think we, I think we closed that already.
I'm willing to reopen public comments if they wish.
We need a second for that.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to reopen public comments.
I'll make a second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, we have a Mr. Dave Bowman on the line, Mr. Bowman, if you are unmuted, please begin speaking.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to be heard, you know, I'm just gonna head and come from the Lancaster, L A S D C A C meeting, so I'm a little bit late. But have you folks just gone ahead and changed, uh, what it takes to go ahead and pass an ordinance from three to four? And just.
That's a different item, sir, that's already, that's already been resolved.
Okay, I, I just wanted to go ahead and.
We're at nineteen point, point four, which is the, uh, uh, committee appointments right now.
Okay, I understand, now, and I to, go ahead and understand that you are also not going ahead and changing the manner in which appointments to committees are, are being made. And is that going to go ahead and affect how appointments are made to Measure A V?
Okay, uh, well, if, if that's, if that's your question, well, go ahead, uh, did you have any others and we can, uh, we can ask for clarification then?
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney or, uh, City Clerk, whoever.
Well, the, the intent, Mayor, of this ordinance is to, uh, if this passes, would affect the future Measure A V committee, yes.
And, and I think we had discussed that in the past, saying that we don't want everybody at the committee from one section of the city, one side of the city, one neighborhood. We wanna make sure that every council person has a voice in how that, you know, how, how the people are being handled in, in these, uh, committees. So, if I can have a few minutes, I, I would like to take some time and explain why I think this change is so important. And, and part of it has to do with the fact that it, that, the fight that we've had on. Taking a small bit of power away from the mayor, um, has, has really delayed some of our commissions, we've, we fought for months over, over this change. Um, and we were never designed to be a strong mayor system, our mayor, uh, does have some, some rights, uh, entitled to him. But there's nothing specifically saying that, that he should have, you know, all the equipments. I know that the, before the charter, um, came in, the chart came in before the, the districts, um, but. We are supposed to be working collaboratively as a council, we shouldn't be constantly fighting, uh, about, about things like this. We should have more of a, an equilibrium of, of balance of power on this council, we are each one vote, um, so. This has really bothered me, what has gone on, so I've actually, I, I've written myself some notes and I wanna read from the notes, cause it upsets me. And I don't wanna forget what it is I'm here to say, but the balance of power on this council. Um, and, and honestly, the, the biggest complainer in the past about mayors taking too much power was Steve Hoffbauer. And in the past, he hated the fact that the mayor was constantly appointing people and taking control of all these, all of these things. The biggest, the biggest, you know, person that wanted this changed in the past was the mayor, and then when he became mayor, he didn't wanna make that change. And so we've seen, uh, uh. It happening all over again, shall I say, the past is now, the, the history is repeating itself, so. Let me just say this, and I'll, I'll read this from my notes, and please let me finish before you make your comments, I'm extremely unhappy and much like the. The fact that we had to do forfeits vote to make the city manager feel safe, um, as a city manager, make his job feel secure. That comes, I think, from a basic distrust of our, of our council, of our intentions, of our integrity. And so now I'm hoping that the forfeits vote seals, seals that in his mind that, that he has some security here. Same with this ordinance, I think that we need as council to understand that we do have a voice, so. For me, it's important to limit the unbridled power of council members, most import, most importantly, the position of mayor. So that all members are able to fairly appoint members to boards that reflect their voice. Without doing so, members may use appointments to repay election favors or promote friends or family. They may appoint persons to garner support for future political gain or use appointments as a means of retaliation against others. It is most especially important to pass this ordinance to protect district council members from the whim of rogue mayors now and in the future. I do not say this lightly, nor figuratively, last time this item was discussed, the A V pressed with an article saying that I questioned the integrity of the mayor. They are correct, I clearly believe that the mayor lacks professionalism and integrity. As recently as yesterday, I went to city hall on my lunch break, the mayor was engaged in a phone conversation in the mayor's office, speaking loudly enough for all to hear. I heard every word he said, and so did some staff members that were in the hallway. In this conversation, the mayor repeatedly bashed me, making such comments as, yes, she's on the prison committee, but let me tell you something about Bettencourt, she can't spell CDC. Mayor Hoffbauer then proceeded to tell the person on the phone that, well, she's Mayor Pro Tem, but in name only. I'm not helping her in any way, including her in things, nor inviting her to accompany me to anything, I'm still including Richard and taking Richard with me instead. Throughout the conversation, he repeatedly bashed me and called me names, but I was not alone, he also repeatedly bashed Councilmember Bishop and Councilmember Carrillo. It is not for me to repeat the ugly things that he said here, Hoffbauer even made veiled threats of coming after them, meaning me, Bishop and Carrillo. Through a variety of transgressions which are only true in his mind, Mayor Hoffbauer has repeatedly proved that he cannot be trusted. He works against his council and tries to divide us, he constantly privately and publicly complains about and criticizes his co-council members and the city. The city that he was elected to support, this change in ordinance helps to limit rogue and vindictive behavior by mayors who are power thirsty. Lack integrity and who might be suffering from male homophobia or delusions of grandeur, this is truly how I feel, this ordinance must be passed.
Thank you, and I'm glad you understand how I feel, anybody else have anything else that they would like to add to that, uh, that, or, uh, have their own, uh?
Yeah, I'd like to comment.
Yes, sir.
The way the motion was originally proposed, um, I thought was, uh, was very unbalanced, um, I believe that the city managers worked very diligently. And, and hard in trying to accommodate the concerns of, uh, the council as well as the mayor. And, uh, and I'm convinced that this is a, an appropriate balance, um, that gives the council members, uh, greater input. But also allows the mayor to have substantial input in the appointment, uh, to the various committees of the city. So, uh, I think that with this, uh, modification, and I thank you, Mr. Murphy, for, uh, working so hard and bringing about the cons, something that I think should be, uh, adopted by. By the city council, I don't necessarily agree with Ms. Bettencourt's comments, um, I'm not necessarily, uh. I certainly didn't invite, uh, uh, Mr. Hoffbauer to include me in a statement like that, I respect you, Ms. Bettencourt, as the Mayor Pro Tem. And, um, I, I may not have necessarily voted you at the beginning, but you're in and I, uh, regard you as, as the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. And I think you're doing a good job in that position, you don't always agree?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, we don't always agree on things and, and we certainly voice our opinions, but you are the Mayor Pro Tem.
So, Mr. Mayor, you stated that you're thankful that we know how you feel. You're not denying any of what Mayor Pro Tem said about the three of us?
So, um. I will only say that. Ms. Bettencourt, uh, stood around eavesdropping, uh, for a period of time, I knew she was in the building. Uh, she doesn't, you know, fact she had somebody on the phone, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to justify, uh, the, uh, vindictive. And, uh, some of the repugnant comments that she made, so I, I will just leave it at that, uh, I will tell you that I, uh, uh, um. That my comments on this item, um, were, I, I actually ag- agreed with what she said about, um, uh. Uh, that, that I was, um, one of the. A more vocal opponents of the, uh, uh, the one-sided, uh, appointment process that went down. These, this so-called. Uh, what, uh, this is the word I'm looking for, comp, whatever it was here that, uh, uh, that, that, on this ordinance. Is the solution to solve a problem that doesn't exist, every single. Uh, board and commission appointment that has come up, I have supported, I have gone out and I have asked for. Each and every council member, I have a three strikes and you're out rule, so every one of you, when appointments came up. And when boards came up, I've asked you at least three times, so it's pretty disingenuous for someone to complain about the outcome of a game. If you don't play and I wanna change the rules of the game later, which is what's going on here, so each and every single time. I did exactly that, I respected, did not agree with a couple of appointments, I s- I still don't agree with them. Uh, but, uh, you know what, uh, it's your guy, and, uh, I, I went with it because that's what I made a commitment to do. And that's exactly what has happened on every single one of these since the beginning of, uh, my term as mayor, so to say that that hasn't happened. Is, um, I'll be as polite as I can, uh, is hogwash, um. The, uh, well anyways, that, that's just the, the basic, that, that's the basic gist of, uh.
So then your derogatory comments stand, I mean, I, I asked that question, you didn't answer the question. The, the way that you described the three of us is the way you feel.
Uh, no, uh, I, I, I did not say that, I was responding to Ms. Bettencourt.
Okay. Well, I, I do, going back to the, the, um, issue at hand, the dis ordinance, uh, I have also been very spoken. About the need to have representation from each council and each council member. Uh, that is something that, uh, I started talking about since I got elected, since day one, in fact, I believe that because of my, um. My need to have each council member make a planning commission appointment, I think that that played. The reason why we have individual council members to appoint a planning commission member from that council with the support of the council at the time. Um, so, uh, having appointments for.
It wasn't a new idea, but go ahead.
Well, there's a lot of ideas, but if nobody takes action, then it's just an idea, but we took action, we took action, you were part of that action, yes. And anyway, uh, I think that we have to have representation citywide, um, in the past, I mean, I've mentioned many times that, uh. The planning commission being one of them, all the representation was from one side of the city. And all the current boards that exist today and future boards, I believe that. Every sector of the city needs to have representation, and I believe that that's what this ordinance intent is. And I, I, again, am full support of it, there's been plenty of discussion, um, the last council meeting when this was, has to be brought back. Um, and if anybody wants to make any more comments, uh, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, I thought the ordinance has presented, second.
Can I make a clarification to be adopted by the mover in the second, with the, uh, the exception at the end of that paragraph at A. After mayor, comma, subject to approval of the city council, and then as well, uh, in the next, uh. Two sentences down where it says in red, it's preferable, the city council's appoint you reside, it still says within, it's was to be within. Our City Clerk actually caught that for us, uh, but it was maybe just before publishing, so, those minor amendments, so, uh. the maker of the motion in the-
Most of staff has amended.
Yes, and I second those changes as well.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment, um. I just, hey, I want to thank staff for bringing this back from last time. I was the one that requested it. I appreciate the clarification on this, because I think it was, I was a little vague before, and I think now it answers some of the questions that we needed answered. And, um, I, I think this is a good thing. As we're in districts now, uh, the representation, uh, is huge that we have as equal, as representation as possible. And this has nothing to do with the, the mayor. I, I worry about our future and our future appointments in councils and mayors, and ensuring that there's equity, equity in all parts of what we're doing, uh, throughout the city and all boards and commissions. And I know that with this vote tonight, we're doing that for future generations. And that's what makes me feel good about this, is that we know that future boards and councils will have that ability to make sure there's equal representation throughout the city.
Yeah, and I, I completely agree with you. Uh, I completely agree with you, Austin. Um, I think as it was proposed before, it, it created an imbalance of a, of a different kind. And, and I think that what's been proposed tonight, uh, addresses that. It protects the council members, and the mayor still has substantial appointing powers. And, uh, I call for the question.
Okay, well, no, I, I will call for it in a moment, because, uh, I'll, uh, take the chair's privilege of just summarizing this right now. First of all, uh, I tried to address a number of problems I saw with this ordinance, uh, and quite frankly, was told, forget it. Okay? Uh, that, uh, that this was the, this was the deal that was gonna happen. Um, there's a number of issues. First of all, everybody is speaking glowingly about representation across the city that's already going on. Uh, this doesn't, this doesn't, this doesn't solve that, this doesn't solve that. Matter of fact, it's, it's a solution to a problem that is, doesn't exist. Um, it, it uses vague terminology like preferable. Um, it, uh, uh, it, it says, um, uh, it, it speaks about, uh, in, in fact, it, it, it removes all of us from being on, on committees. The languages that exist here prevents us from being on committees. Okay? So, you, you, that's one of the things that you're killing with this. Um, it also, um, there are boards that aren't regulated by the city, yet there's language in here that says that all boards serve at our pleasure. That's not true. So, I'm gonna go ahead and honor your, uh, request to call for the question, but because of the issues that I brought up and have not been incorporated into this, as well as the fact that this may be flying in the face of, uh, uh, and, and to address the comment that this was, um, never, um, there was never any rules about this stuff. In fact, the, uh, the attorney general had, had, had made that comment. We are, this is not a strong mayor position, okay? So if you, if you take out your government 101, uh, a, a strong mayor has a staff, sets the budget, does a lot of other stuff, there's a, uh, incredible difference between that and a, and a directly elected mayor. And there was a substantial issue behind going to the directly elected mayor within the city charter. Um, furthermore, the city charter is silent on this issue. We may have some debate on that. Um, and, uh, I've had it, uh, the opinion, um, provided to me that in the absence of addressing an item specifically within the charter, that, uh, that you fall back to what the general law provides. Uh, and again, uh, the, the general law provides that, um, the mayor, and it, it just, I'm just, I am just shocked that we, we had, with, with all the cities that are out there, uh, we've got the, the assistant city manager city and one neighboring city. Uh, or sort of neighboring cities, um, set up here. But, uh, during that tenure, that's, that's the mayor's responsibility. Uh, I, I, I take those, uh, I take those appointments very seriously. I've appointed people that have, are detrimental politically, I think, to me. But again, out of respect to the council members and my commitment to make those appointments, I did it. So, uh, I just want to let you know that, and, um, I think that some of the concepts in here, I tried to bring forward a very large document, um, from, uh, other communities that kind of spelled out each of these different things as opposed to try to take a broad brush, uh, to it, uh, as this one is. Um, uh, although there may be some positive, uh, issues in here, um, I've been advised that, uh, my voting for it, um, I, I, I would lose my opportunity at, uh, uh, redress on this issue. So I will, uh, go ahead and ask the city clerk to call the roll, but I wanted to explain what my vote was, uh, on the item.
I do have a question. Um, I thought this ordinance only affects the boards and commissions that are directly appointed by the city and work at the behest of the city.
That's correct.
One of the things that a lot of us were thinking, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just getting that clarification from the city attorney. So that's restricted to those boards only, right?
Our boards, committees, and commissions. We couldn't restrict another one that's subject to their bylaws or regulations.
So it's only the, the, the boards that, that we usually nominate for the city?
Correct. Two point oh eight, point oh three oh is our boards, committees.
Right, not, not outside boards.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And I think, Mr. Loa, that if, in the staff report, they actually listed the boards.
That's correct.
In the staff report.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Well, I, I pointed out the inaccuracy, so let's go ahead and go for vote.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
No.
Mayor Pro Temp Bettencourt?
Yes.
Council member Carrillo?
Yes.
Council member Loa?
Yes.
And council member Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
There you go.
Motion cares.
Moving on. Now, what do you want to do? Let's go back to eighteen, uh, eighteen one?
Eighteen one.
So I guess, I guess as a result of that, um, I think the argument is gonna be made that, that those nominees are null and void, is that, I don't want to belabor this issue. Is that, uh, is that the consensus of the council?
Yeah, the, uh, for this item, that ordinance won't take effect for thirty days. So this will still, this appointment will still be made pursuant to section two point oh eight, point oh three oh, as it reads, "At present on the mayor's nomination, subject to ratification by the council."
Is, is there, uh, is there a motion to move forward with this item? Or do we want to drag this out and, uh, put it off?
I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
Is there a second? Okay, I guess it dies for lack of a second. Okay, um, who's doing the staff report on this? Uh, Mr. Murphy, or is that?
Yes.
Uh, Ann, who's been working on this with me for about three years?
Uh, yeah, they, they, they have my name here, Mayor, uh.
All right.
You know, the-
Your, your turn in the barrel again, sir.
Yeah, we have, uh, uh, there was nine names brought forward. Uh, we are bringing forward, uh, the seven, as this committee was initially adopted by council, with an alternate, uh, of the one person who also, uh, passed through the, uh, process that we go through. So, this is the, uh, and, and my understanding is the mayor has solicited opinions, uh, from the council, and these are the names that were brought forward to staff. Um, and I asked the mayor if we can bring these forward, uh, for this evening. So I will, um, stand up and, and say that, um, staff supports, uh, moving forward with this recommendation.
So who brought forward these names to staff?
Uh, the mayor brought the names forward to staff. He brought nine names forward, and there's eight listed here tonight.
How many did he apply, can you ask, do you know? I think it was like over thirty?
Thirty-two.
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 Well, which proves the point we just made on the ordinance to have, uh, council members make appointments. All of these names were brought up by the mayor, and did any of us council members have any input or recommended any of these names to the mayor?
I, again, uh, if you don't, uh, if you don't pick up a bat and take a swing, I, I, you know, uh, I can't, uh, I can't, you know, uh, three strikes and you're out, you know? So, uh, I, uh, I, uh, I had some people that name dropped. Some of the applicants name dropped council members' names. But, uh, I asked, I, I, I solicited input from each one of you, and, uh, it took, it took me a couple of months to go through interviews, uh, emails, and things back and forth with the, uh, with the various members here, uh, being very cognizant of, uh, ensuring, um, uh, diversity and, uh, and inclusion within that process. And, um, and keeping in mind that, uh, that it's important to have this in place because we are about to undergo another audit by the Human Relations Commission, starting, I think, I think it's started yesterday. Uh, so, uh, um, we will lose the, um, uh, lose some face with those guys, uh.
Well, let, let me say this, Mayor, that I'm not worried about losing face with them. I'm, I'm supporting this commission because it was right for our residents, it was right for our city, not a checkbox.
No, no, absolutely that is not. But in everything that we do, I think you serve on the audit committee, there's a reason why there's an audit committee there. And quite frankly, they check boxes as well. Uh, we have to look at being evaluated, uh, by, uh, experts in these fields, um, not affected by our knowledge, and quite frankly, our lack of knowledge in many of the areas that these folks are bringing to the table for us. So, uh, that was, uh, you know, the, it was, it was the, uh, it was the subject matter expertise or, uh, as was brought forward, uh, the lived experience that some of these people can bring up to bring the credibility to this group, uh, that, quite frankly, I can tell you that none of us on this council have some of the, have, have a fraction of the expertise of most of these folks in here. That's not a criticism, it's an observation. And I, uh, I, 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 um, beat the staff to death over helping to, to help me, uh, go through this process. Uh, it has not been, uh, an easy process. I'll be happy to sit down with any one of you if you want to take a look at my, my filing system on, on how I, when I, when I have made these types of evaluations. And it's just similar to the, um, to the force ranking system that we've used for city managers in the past. So, uh, I think that we've got a, uh, a very diverse and, uh, energized group. Uh, you know, um, I had a couple of people that didn't apply because they were becoming concerned about, you know, what was perceived as some politicization of it. I managed to keep, uh, the, 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 kind of the cream of the crop, in my opinion, uh, on this group right here, and I think you'll be, uh, uh, very impressed with, uh, with, uh, the, uh, the number of these folks here. And I, I, I'm sure you've all, um, diligently went through the, uh, the resumes and material that was provided here. And, uh, it's, it's hard, it, uh, this has not been an easy process, trust me. And I waited, I was ready to go with this in September, October, and, uh, I went against this staff's recommendation to bring it back then. So no, I wanted to wait till after the election. And, and we got into the holiday nonsense and, and the politics, and, but I think we're here. And, um, you know, it's, it's just, it's your guys' call. What do you want to do?
I have a question for the city attorney. Um, a lot of the, uh, changes that we just made in the ordinance regarding appointments, is this something that, for example, is approved by the council tonight, would then, could then change after the ordinance becomes effective in thirty days?
Now, these appointments are set forth in the establishing ordinance of the Human Rights Commission for the length and duration for which those serve. So any modification to our appointment process in the interim would only affect their next appointment.
Okay.
I think, is it a one-year term, city attorney, for them?
I don't immediately recall.
Yeah, I think, I think they get a year, and, and then the next cycle, they would, they, our ordinance would give you in.
Okay.
Anybody else, or is there a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you, sir. You have a second?
Oh, did no, did nobody make a second yet?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any final comments, or city clerk, uh, call the roll things?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Temp Bettencourt?
Yes.
Council member Carrillo?
Yes.
Council member Loa?
Yes.
And council member Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I will, uh, be contacting each of the people on that, uh, on that, uh, on that committee, uh, tomorrow. Um, okay, so we got twenty point four. Who's doing, uh, who gets the, uh?
Uh, Mayor, I think we have to go to twenty point one.
I'm sorry, just, but I got the, my, my, my agenda looks like a, a football play card here with all the arrows on it from-
We all can't wait to get to twenty point four, but we'll start at twenty point one.
And, uh, and, uh, we will, uh, matter of fact, can we, uh, we need to take a, a break. We're at nine o'clock, we need to take a brief break. Uh, so give us about, uh, five minutes, and we'll come back and, uh, we'll pick up the balance of the new business matters. So give us about five minutes and we'll come back and we'll pick up the balance of the new business matters.
We're ready to go, mayor.
Alrighty, so who's got, let's see, twenty point one, back to new business. And it says, finance manager Kane, or his designee. There you go, there you are, thanks, Gene.
Okay, honorable mayor and council members. Twenty point one, adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero one five. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale adopting sewer maintenance district reserve policy. Staff is recommending thirty percent of reserve policy. The, the purpose of this policy is to ensure that the city has sufficient funding available at all times to meet its obligation and capital requirement. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Keith, did you say forty percent?
Thirty percent.
Okay, council, any questions or a motion on twenty point one?
Second, second Carrillo.
Loa and Carrillo. City clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Bencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And carries unanimously twenty point two. And that, Gene, you're the star of the show today, Keith. Mr. Kane, sure, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty point two, adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash oh seven, oh one seven. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale authorizing an A-T-F-B loan agreement of four point five million dollars to the sewer fund. Now, this resolution is to cancel, terminate the agreement A dash sixty eight forty six between the general fund and the park development fund. And enter into agreement A dash seven three nine seven between the general fund and the park development fund. I'm sorry, I think I read the wrong information there. So...
Yeah, with twenty point two is the sewer maintenance fund, sir.
Yeah, 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 so, so again, this is the loan between sewer maintenance district and the, and Anaverty. If I can explain a little bit on the background. If you recall the briefing, so Anaverty has nine point six million dollar debt with the Perilum. All of that nine point six million dollars, the six point six million dollars is the principal amount. So this resolution allows the sewer to assume four point five million dollars from Anaverty. And ultimately, sewer fund will actually pay back Perilum. So that's the agreement. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council members to desire, you have any questions for Mr. Kane? Or a motion?
Motion approved, Loa.
Second.
I have Loa with the, with the motion?
I had a, I had a question for our city attorney, Mr. Beck. I live in the Anaverty...
Just hold on, was there a second?
Yeah, actually I can get it, but Austin can speak, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure, since I live in the Anaverty area, that doesn't pose any conflict that I vote on this item? You know, here's what I'd say out of an abundance of caution. Is it doesn't immediately seem that there would be one because it seems that this is a general application to the public as a whole. If you have a concern, I would advise abstaining for the sake of taking a safe approach. But I don't immediately see a conflict, given, again, the general application. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I think we've kind of gone through that before. So I think council members are just reminded that, you know, they threw their packets to make sure that, to hash out some of these concerns. So that we don't end up with a, you know, with either acting inappropriately or not acting when we should. So, great question, real good, sir, thank you. Mr. Bishop, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else, or a motion?
It's been made and seconded, mayor.
Oh, that, thank you, that's right. So if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and the city clerk will call for a question.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Bencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. We already did twenty point three. And going back to the crib sheet here, we'll look at twenty point four.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm gonna share my screen and share the presentation. Are you all able to see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening. The item before you is a report on the redistricting process for the city council. And seeking direction on forming, or potentially forming, a districting commission in our community. So this evening, I'm going to give you just a bit of an overview of considerations that the council will need to look at and our community to be involved in looking at redistricting for this, this year. I will give you a presentation on the types of commissions that the council may wish to consider to provide additional community input on this process. Give you a presentation on the requirements to serve on these various types of commissions. And then provide some input on community outreach. So, the California Voting Rights Act was enacted to implement the California constitutional guarantees of equal protection and the right to vote. The purpose of the CVRA is to present an at-large election system from diluting minority voting power and impairing underrepresented groups from influencing the outcome of a race. While modeled after the Federal Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, the CVRA lowers the threshold established, the threshold required to establish a voting rights violation. In twenty fifteen, the city council adopted ordinance fourteen seventy-one, transitioning from at-large to by-district city council member elections under Elections Code one zero zero one zero. When the, once the federal census is completed and released, state law requires that the city council review and adjust the boundaries of its districts to ensure compliance with the Voting Rights Act. So there are a number of different criteria that the council and the community will need to look at. And since twenty fifteen, there have been two pieces of legislation that have passed that do impact the council districts and will need to be looked at going forward. One of them is Senate Bill one zero one eight that became effective in January twenty nineteen, which expanded the methods for redrawing district maps. And under this legislation, it expanded the types of commissions that could be appointed to assist a community in creating the new district maps. And secondly, is the Fair Maps Act of twenty twenty, which is AB nine four nine. And this, the Fair Maps Act created a standardized redistricting criteria aimed to keep communities together and to prohibit partisan gerrymandering. This act also expanded community outreach and public hearing requirements and timelines which coincide with the state redistricting schedule. So the three key overarching requirements, criteria for drawing district lines. One is equal population of each district is required. And all of these are to the extent possible and practical. That it's compliant with the Voting Rights Act and the Federal Voting Rights Act and the California Voting Rights Act. And population is adjusted to count incarcerated people at their home address, not their prison address. And then the Fair Maps Act applies additional criteria that will be required in looking at districts for the coming period of time. And this is listed in order of priority. One is geographic contiguous districts, to the extent practical. Areas that meet only at the points adjoining quarters are not considered contiguous. Or areas that would be separated by water, an issue that we have here in Palmdale, would not be considered contiguous. The intent to preserve communities of interest. And this is defined as a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district to, to allow for effective and fair representation. That the district maintains a geographic integrity of an area. So a city or census designated place shall also try to be preserved. That the districts are geographically compact, to the extent practical, where, where this doesn't conflict with other criteria listed above. That the districts are easily identifiable to residents. And so that the districts are bounded by natural or artificial barriers like streets or city boundaries. And that the districts prohibit favoritism. They do not favor partisan or any political party. So the council has options in looking at what type of community engagement you'd like to consider. The council has the opportunity that they can adopt the districts themselves. And that is also considering the variety of public engagement opportunities that will be required. The council may appoint a commission. And there are three different types of commissions that the council can consider. One of them is an advisory commission. And the advisory commission is just that. So as the councils had a discussion about various types of commissions or committees, this would be an advisory committee that would be made up of members of our community that would work with a city hired demographer and elections expert to look at all of the different criterias of what the, the community feels the district map should be. And they would make a recommendation to the council on a district map. And the council would have the opportunity to either approve that map or make amendments to it based on all of the different laws that govern this process. The council could also select to appoint a hybrid commission. This would recommend, be a commission that would recommend two or more maps to the city council. And the city council would need to select one of those maps. The hybrid commission has further restrictions and further qualifications and disqualifications of who could serve on that commission. So they must be a resident of the city. They cannot be all part of the same political party. But then there, within the staff report, there are additional outlines in the appendix of what types of criteria would disqualify a person. So spouses, family members who have served as an officer, an employee, or paid consultant to a political campaign. Staff member or consultant who was contracted with a currency council member, registered lobbyists, or financial contributors to a council candidate. And then there are further requirements as well. If a member serves on the hybrid commission or the independent commission, that post-service prohibit, prohibitions of things like for five years after the appointment of the commission, a commission member would be prohibited from being a candidate to an elective office. And, and, and there are other additional requirements outlined in the staff report. With any of these options, there is a significant amount of community outreach that we are going to be required to do to ensure that all members of our community have the opportunity to have their voices heard. And to make sure that we are identifying and outreach to all of our communities of interest in Palmdale. But at minimum, there is a requirement for four public hearings. One public hearing is required prior to the first draft map being issued. Two hearings are required after the draft map, draft map is issued. And then at least one of those hearings would need to be on a weekend or a weeknight after six P.M. And then the fourth public hearing would be the hearing in which the council adopted an ordinance to accept the new maps. All meetings, just like all public meetings, would be required to be open and accessible to persons with disabilities. And we would need to have the maps posted online at least seven days prior to the adoption of the final map being adopted. In addition to that, and as is identified in the current Assembly Bill, the city is going to be required to use all methods available to ensure that we are reaching all members of our community, not just those that are active or, you know, attend council meetings or are currently participating. We really do need to make a good faith effort to try to reach all members of our community, including those that are not English speaking. So we will utilize our social media, our regular media, just our good governance of noticing and making available public meetings or workshops. Reaching out to our community organizations, including those serving non-English speaking communities to make sure that all members have an opportunity to have their say. We will need to make available live translation services, if requested, for languages other than English. We will have a dedicated webpage with information in English and Spanish and any other language that we would be required to produce ballots. I believe it's just English and Spanish for our community. And then make sure that there is opportunity for the public... And then make sure that there is opportunity for the public to provide comments and map drafts submitted in writing or electronically and make those available. Most demographer firms and elections consultants have electronic mapping tools that the public can utilize. But recognizing that not all members of our public have the computer capacity or the technical expertise to use those, members of our public will have the opportunity to submit in writing, you know, scratched on the back of an envelope. However, they wish to provide input, they will have that opportunity to provide that kind of input to the council on districts. So tonight, in addition to talking a little bit about this, we wanted to give you a little bit of the timeline that we will need to engage in, in order to go through this process. So we were originally going to bring this in February, but needed to move this initial discussion to March. So we want to solicit the council's feedback and direction on kind of engagement and if you wish to have a commission, and if so, which type? We will then wait for the Census Bureau data. And what we will begin to do, kind of outreach, start collecting information and registration from members of the public that would like to be informed, would like to get notices for meetings and have that available. We really are holding out for the Census Bureau data. Originally, that was, I believe, supposed to be here in June, it has been delayed until July. And then now it's delayed until September. So it's going to really compress our ability to meet all the deadlines, but we're not alone in this, this is statewide. The final public hearing and adoption, we need to have everything approved, all the public hearings, all the outreach done, and have the new maps submitted to the county registrar by April seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, in order for them to be in place and ready to go for the twenty twenty-two election on November eighth. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and come back to myself. And that is my presentation. So staff is seeking input, answer any questions that the council has, and to seek direction on if you wish to have a commission, if so, what type of commission? And talk a little bit about the criteria that you might wish to impose on commission members beyond what is required under the state guidance.
So Anne, I have a question. On your timeline, it says that we should have the commission creation March into April. So if we, in panel of commission, then what do they do for six months waiting on the Census Bureau data? Because you really can't start to evaluate our population distribution without that census data. So for six months, what would they do?
This is, this is just the beginning of the process. What, if a commission is appointed, what we can hope that they can help us accomplish is some of that community outreach. And reaching out to the community, identifying communities that might be underserved. Helping to make sure that we have good contact information and opportunities for the public to see what the process is about and understand it. And then, once we get the data and the demographer has the opportunity to look at that, look at our current districts, see if changes need to be made and what changes might need to be made, then we can really start that full-on engagement with the community and really start soliciting input on the data that is coming in. But I think prior to that, and because we're going to have a little bit more time than we had hoped or would like, we, I think, have more opportunity to really make the public aware of this process and give them opportunities to provide their feedback before we get the maps or before we get the demographic data. And then after we get that data and have the real data with the current census data to try to get their recommendations for the council moving forward.
And then what, is there a limit to the amount of districts that they can, they're only limited to four or five, right? If they decide that they think we need more, does that mean that we have to create additional council person positions? How does that work? And second question is, at the election time of November twenty-second, there's a possibility that some council persons will be unseated because they will no longer be in their same district, is that a possibility?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on a friend, the city attorney, but I'll try to answer and then I'm gonna ask Chris if I'm on target. So the. I'm sorry, the first question was.
It was how many districts, and if they want more, do we have to make more council people?
So the first question about the districts. So the ordinance for the city council is for four districts with an elected mayor. I don't believe this redistricting process would change that, it would just be looking at the current four districts and what the boundaries of those districts are. So it wouldn't be to increase it, it would be to modify the districts that are currently here to be compliant with the rules of law. Is that, am I speaking correctly?
You're very correct.
And then, Chris, I'm gonna pass to you to ask, answer the second part of that question.
Yeah, this is one of the tough things that would come to exist, and it's, there's a there's a gerrymandering tactic, which isn't something that we have, we would, it wouldn't exist here, but it's, I mean, there's a handful of them, cracking, packing, and kidnapping. Kidnapping is essentially where you draw an incumbent out of their district. That's not what this manner of method is here, that usually would happen at a statewide level. But there is always the possibility, one, by charter, we have our districts set now, right? An amendment to.
No, by charter, but by.
By ordinance, right. But the, there is always a possibility that districts will change, and it's literally the exact process that we're taking here. And in association with an election, it could be an issue. What I would say is, as you're going through this, you know, your chief concern is what level of control and cooperation the city council wants to have in this process, right? The preliminary question is, do we want to have a commission, yes or no, right? If it's no, the city council's gonna run the show on this, they're gonna approve the districts. If it's yes, then you're gonna pick one of those three types of commissions. An advisory one, that just gives an opinion, if the council adopts or not. The hybrid one, they're gonna give you a handful of opinions, you adopt or not, or you completely wash your hands of it and give it to an independent commission.
And if I could just add to follow up on Anne's answer to the Mayor Protam's question, I think we're at an advantage that we're gonna have a little bit of time. Because if, if the council moves forward with a commission and we hire a demographer and we hire a P R firm, specifically, this gives us time to train the commission that's about what they're gonna go into. It's not gonna be, hey, hurry up, you gotta learn all this. It gives us time to, so that when the data comes out, they're prepared. And that would be staff's intent, that if they, if you go forward with a commission, that we're gonna take advantage of this time, we are gonna do outreach, but we're also gonna train so that they are completely prepared to bring forward a, a great product for our residents.
So if, one of the options is for the council itself to do this, the council would obviously have the same kind of input in demographic information and
They would.
Consultants and so on, in other words, they would get the same kind of education as a, as a, as a commission member.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's an option. But we don't have to decide these things tonight, right? I mean.
I think the direction the staff seeking is what they intend to do. So this is, we're setting the framework for what our process is going to be. And that's whether or not we're gonna, it'll stay internal with the council or we create a commission so that we can begin that process. I think this is the first step.
Do we need a little more information? I mean, Anne, I'm sorry, I think you've made a great presentation, this is a great staff report. But.
Can I make a suggestion?
For the first time yesterday.
Can I make a suggestion? Because we did have an issue with the printer, this, right? So some people did not have that material. What I'd like to offer up for the council is let us come back at the, our workshop in two weeks. So you can digest this. And what we'll have on the workshop is just going through the four scenarios again, or any follow-up questions. And that way, we're not putting you in a position to make an ill-advised, I, I want each of you to be able to dig into, Dan did a great job, there's a lot of data here. And then we'll put it on, if it, if it so pleases the city council, on the workshop, so we can have dialogue back and forth. And then maybe prepare two weeks later to give us direction, or that night to give us direction.
Okay, yeah, and I, I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. Murphy. But aside from the report, in order to thoroughly digest this, are the attachments? I mean, these attachments are quite lengthy and, and sometimes it'd be appropriate to, to do some further research into the background of what's already included there. So I think that's a good suggestion, and hopefully could do it that way.
And, and I would add, that might also afford us the opportunity to bring the demographer or a demographer forward to ask, to answer any technical questions that maybe staff, that you guys come up with. I'd like to have the subject matter experts in the room or on Zoom in our COVID world for you.
Is it, is it possible to have an estimate of what it would cost to hire the demographer? And what the total cost would be in going through this process?
Yes, I would tell you that Anne has already solicited proposals from demographers. So in two weeks, I can bring them forward to give you that. And also, Anne has worked hard on getting proposals from communication firms who specialize in going out and engaging the public in a situation like this. So I could, I could provide that information. Frankly, I can give, we can give you that this week ballpark to go through this process. And I think we put Anne a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget.
And that's additionally, in terms of outreach as well, we have our communications department has a very robust outreach opportunities that we will use as the baseline. It, what we hope to be able to do and hope as our COVID world is changing and as, as things open up, we hope that we will be able to go from not just the Zoom-type meetings but to opportunities for in-person meetings or workshops with the community so that we can be in a room together and have the public be able to work with our demographer, work with our communications consultant, and be able to really be involved in this, because it is a complicated matter and there's a lot of, it, it's, it's something that's, there's a lot of layers to. And we really want the public to be able to, be able to try to understand what the different decisions are and what, as a community, what the law requires us to look at, to make sure that everyone has a voice in our community. And so we wanna try to find as, as many ways as we can to engage that. And so, yes, we do have a hundred fifty thousand dollars budgeted. And I'm not gonna take all the credit, because Shanae and our city attorney's office have been, we've been working on this very diligently together. And like I said, this is kind of the first step with the council of introducing this, talking about at the beginning of the process. And we, certainly at the end of the night, after a very long meeting, we don't want you to feel rushed in having to try to digest this and make decisions on it. Myself, Chris, Shanae, we're all available if there's any questions that you have after this or additional information the council would like to look at. And then we'll be prepared for the workshop or whenever the council desires us to bring this back to solicit your opinions on how you'd like to proceed forward.
Is this pro, process appropriate to open to discussion the charter city in making the mayor term be four years? Would it be allowed, or is that a completely separate issue?
It'd be separate, this is, at least the way that it's adjourned now is to the specific requirements that for, for the redistricting that we're required to do. So it would be a separate issue.
Okay, so that would be something that the council would bring up for opening the charter city and then it goes to the boarders if any changes are proposed by the council as far as the formation of the charter.
Yeah, what I would say is it would be a direction to staff to bring back a comprehensive report on what the process would be, whether it would be an ordinance or a charter amendment, correct?
If, if we decided not to go with four years, but to go with rotational, like some of the other cities like Santa Cruz Valley do, where the mayor is rotational, that would mean that we would have to create a fifth district, right? So would the charter amendment have to be done first and then maybe the districts? I'm not sure how that would work or if it would be.
That was exactly my thinking, because this, even though it's not part of the redistricting process, but opening the charter to make it rotational or for years for, for the mayor, as you know, that has been the term of contention with what we just talked about tonight, the changing of the council every two years. So as far as getting more stability, either making the mayor be in every four years or rotational, which will make it a fifth district, then I, I would like to see how the council feels about opening the charter at this time, maybe, to see what recommendations or how the council wants to explore these charter amendments.
So for the sake of the direction to staff, then, as it exists under this issue, because that does then fit, as you've described it, is that the direction would be to table this item for it to come back at the workshop, as Mr. Murphy's described. And then we'll see if within that period of time, you can bring back a comprehensive report in that regard. As it will be a separate item.
Or it can be.
So it can be considered as well.
It can be a separate item, where council can give staff direction to start exploring that idea and maybe, you know, survey the council to see, you know, what, what the charter would mean changing it again by four years or rotational, which again opens it up to a fifth district. But anyway, just, just an idea, I'll throw that out for everybody to think about.
Okay, yeah, I like that. I wanted to say that I appreciate staff for, for diving into this. I know this is new for everyone, since we had to redistrict and do this, since the Voting, Voter Rights Act. And there's been a lot of growing pains, and some of them, even tonight, tonight's meeting, about how we switched to districts, and it changed everything. And this is a good thing right here, because it promotes inclusiveness and equity within our city, because there's no question about it that the demographics are changing, and they're changing fast. So it's gonna be really important that we have equal accountability for all people in the city and representation, especially for those who have been disenfranchised over the years, to finally get a fair shake. And it's all still, it's all still playing out from the Voters Rights Act that was four or five years ago. So I want to thank everyone for their cooperation and patience as we get this, get this figured out, so to speak. But, but overall, I'm still happy that we're doing this, and I think it's definitely a step in the right direction.
So we're basically in agreement that we're gonna bring this back at the next meeting so we can have some time to digest all this material, is that, is that where we're going with this?
Yes.
I offered to that up, but you guys, I think.
Yeah, I would move that we take this up at the, at the next council meeting, which is, what, March sixteenth?
Do you want a direction to return with the, as Mr. Carrillo described, regarding the, the mayor rotating and/or for your term?
Well, what, what's on the agenda tonight is strictly the redistricting issue. So my motion is limited to that at this point, that we bring that back. I think there's a considerable amount of material to to intelligent, intelligently address this when we come back on the sixteenth. Adding this other issue, I think it's, it's linked, because I understand what's, what's being attempted here and it would necessarily create a fifth district. So. I mean, I, I guess it's tied in. So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and accept that.
Okay, I'll go.
A four-year term for the mayor, is that something that you would. Well, the possible creation of a fifth district, I mean, if, if it's going to be discussed, it has to be discussed now. I think if we wait too long, it's probably not gonna be.
Yeah, well, the fifth district, that means that there's gonna be a rotational mayor. Sure, I'm still okay with that.
Whether or not we should go to a, a position where there would be a rotational mayor, which would necessarily have to create a fifth district, I guess that discussion has to be taken.
I think one thing I need to look at is.
Gotta start talking about it sooner than later.
One thing to look at for legal is to see what the Voters Rights Act lawsuit says. If it's, that is.
Yeah, I think we have to, I think we, pretty much everything we do, we have to do with a, it's gotta be attached with, kind of like a mother.
kind of like a mother may I with approval from the court or from the plaintiffs, doesn't it?
Yeah, I I think there was a contingency in there for approval similar to the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. There's a preclearance prior to enacting any.
Yeah, so I think we need to explore that before we start going down a path that we gotta try to put it reverse and back downhill on, so.
Yeah.
All right, so let's bring it back on the sixteenth of March.
So we have the motion from yourself and a second from Mr. Bishop, I believe we just.
Right.
Call the question.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
I'm I'm still not, uh what exactly, could we restate the motion?
We have a first by Councilmember Loa and seconded by Councilmember Bishop to table this item to the three sixteen twenty-one city council workshop and for staff to research the uh possible charter amendments to include a fifth district and um rotational mayor.
For the four-year mayor position.
For the four-year mayor position.
So it's it's the reapportionment material that we're that we are discussing tonight and then the other potential uh that's been discussed.
Correct, that's a very comprehensive report in that regard as a separate item.
Okay.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Prochamban Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember reports, anybody got any highlights they wanna provide? I noticed our uh reports have gotten voluminous in the last month.
I I just have a couple of things I'd like to report on. I um I do attend the Palmville Sheriff's Boosters as a man officer net organization. It meets the morning after a city council meeting, so tomorrow morning, and I did attend the one on uh uh February third. SCAG Transportation Committee. We had a meeting with Congressman uh Tony Cardenas between uh Mr. Murphy, uh the mayor, myself and other uh key members in terms of uh getting assistance uh for inclusion in the transportation bill for uh the intersection of Rancho Vista or Avenue P and Sierra Highway and other similar projects. Uh I think we had a very good meeting and I think we're gonna have a good supporter there. AVTA Council briefing was on the sixteenth. I attended the AVTA Board meeting uh on February twenty-third. What came out of that primarily is that we voted to buy six electric buses. We are the first electrified transportation uh entity in the nation, leading the nation in that respect. We got other reports regarding uh what's happening with the new administration, the kind of funding that's coming in and uh the fact that we have um state measures that are also going to uh affect transportation issues. And uh let's see. I'll be at the Palmville Sheriff's Boosters meeting tomorrow morning. I'm not sure I'm gonna make the yellow monument sign simply because I have court in the morning as well as that other board meeting. And we had a presentation regarding the um Veterans Day event, the flags uh event, uh the healing fields that took place on February sixteenth. And um I think it was attended by most of us right here past the bound square. And we gave recognition to our to our veterans and veteran organizations. And with a nice financial presentation to them as well that will help them in what they're doing. So those are some of the things that I did during the month. Thank you.
Anybody else want to uh clue the council in as to what actually happened as opposed to just something beyond the list here? Any highlights that we should be aware of?
I want to show that my my stuff is listed and it is made a part of member uh uh it is a part of public record. But what I didn't wanna leave the meeting without saying and as a reminder is that um March is Women's History Month for uh all the gals out there. And March eighth, which is coming up, is um International Women's Day. And their motto this year is to choose, to challenge. And for International Women's Day, what that means is that they say that from challenge comes change and that women should always stand up for themselves. And in the words of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, she said that women belong in all places where decisions are being made. So I I hope to see more women, you know, standing up and getting involved and taking a place uh on councils, commissions and boards and having their voices heard.
Well said.
Anybody, uh anybody else?
I I just wanted.
I think also just for clarification, uh providing a list is not, I don't think that is quite the same as writing some level of a of a report. But uh you know, although it is true that we can all just go back and look at the minutes. I think part of the ideas here is that um we should have and I and some kind of a working knowledge of kind of like where we're going with some of the agencies and things that we are on so that the rest of the council has got some, you know, so that so that there's nothing. We 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 had a problem with this another uh other times when um the 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 standard response was regular meeting, regular stuff that we were doing, nothing new or different. And the next thing you know, things were blowing up at some of these agencies. So I would just uh encourage everybody to use this opportunity for what it was intended. Because um you know, I've got, I submit my calendar, I just, you know, um for that purpose. But uh feel that I I'm not, I'm not sure that just submitting a list is really what the spirit and intent was being that I was around when maybe twelve thirty-four has passed. For that's worth, whatever that's worth, I mean, we're all big, we're all adults and do what we feel is best.
Well, I'll just submit my list in addition to, in addition to saying about a couple of things I did. And that was well said, Laura. Thank you for for talking about Women's uh History Month coming up next. One thing I just wanted to point out uh that's been going on recently is I wanted to thank everyone, including some of the staff members that have been coming out and helping clean up our desert. One of uh, one of the problems we have out here is the illegal dumping in the desert. And I'm, I couldn't be happier with the kind of, with the level of participation and enthusiasm that that some residents have. They come out every Saturday, we go out and we clean up the desert and we're we're making a grassroots effort to take pride and clean our our valley up again. And it's just really exciting to see people uh come out, come together safely and uh take part in that. I just wanted to say thank you for everyone listening.
And Austin, thank you for for supporting that. And I just wanna give my apologies for not attending. I recently got my my boot off of my leg and my leg did not heal, so.
Oh, no.
I have a permanent non-union um fracture on my leg and I'm having terrible problems with my ankle at my feet. So it's very difficult for me to get out um and do things in a, in rocky territory, sandy territory or putting any pressure on on my my ankle or my feet right now. So when I ever get well, I promise you that I will come out.
Well, a- a- actually, maybe it, maybe I can help you with that. We have to have somebody that staffs the uh the kind of like the command post, the check-in point. Somebody's gotta get signatures, somebody's gotta get names, somebody's gotta hand out uh granola bars, water, gloves and trash bags. So uh uh we got able-bodied people doing that now, so maybe that's there. So Austin, great point. We've been, we've been out there now for six weeks out of Barrow Springs. Well, I think four weeks of Barrow Springs and two weeks out at uh at Amargosa. Barrow Springs looks amazing right now when you go down there, the difference um when you go down there. I was by there tonight and we apparently just missed a a new dumper, but that was turned over to code enforcement because the area that they dumped, I personally cleaned last week, so it's really frustrating.
It is.
Getting the gates in there, uh maybe discourage some of it. The approach will be um uh much more visible for folks. We have a number of volunteer groups that have been out there. And uh like I say, um I know that uh Mr. Bishop has been uh on this thing uh out there with us uh every week. And uh you know, uh.
It it was a promise, you know, it was a promise that I made that we made that to our residents that we'd help clean it up and, you know.
Well, I think the fact that we had probably, I think we had two pages over fifty people. It wasn't, they all weren't there when the picture moment went on. But I think we probably had well over fifty people there last weekend. And the cool part about it is, is the hikers that are coming in. Now we've got people that are handing them gloves, handing them a trash bag and telling them leave it at the side of the road. And then uh those of us with trucks come by and pick up those trash bags, just kind of like the Caltrans guys do when they leave the trash bags on the side of freeway. And uh and it's that, it's that level of effort that's uh that's really making the uh an enormous difference back in there, so. Yeah, it is. Well done, well done.
Well done, Art.
Yeah, Austin, can I make a recommendation?
Yeah.
The Sheriff's Department has an illegal dumping crew that handles illegal dumpers in the county pockets. They're doing a great job. Their reports come through my desk every week. I wonder if maybe you would like to meet with them or maybe we can meet with them together and and pick their brains for some ideas about not just the cleanups, but the enforcement of people that we find that are doing the illegal dumping. Would that be something you'd be interested in?
Yeah, absolutely, cuz as I, you know, I, as I go on our city Facebook page, I see the number one complaint is uh the thing in the desert, so.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll make, I'll make.
So I think, I think anecdotally, one of the things I'm hearing is it's on my list for future report issues is for the city attorney to report back because I I'm getting some information that um current policies coming out of downtown LA by various entities. And I don't know, I can't put my finger on exactly where it's coming from. But the the arrests uh are not translating into filings and that were, that the filings are about half in January. And I I don't know the exact numbers on that. So like I say, I've just gotten some anecdotal information from, that I'm trying to put together from various sources. So if the city attorney can bring us back some information on that and let us know, because I know that the current uh we've had a lot of problems the last several years in trying to prosecute these cases. The DA's office has not been very enthusiastic about it. And um uh I think that's one of the things that the city attorney is looking at addressing as as part of, one of the things that they're, they they can look at. Uh and also e- explore some ordinance possibilities to um, we talked about before, things like we, if you're, if you're sending someone to the dump, requiring it to either have to get a copy of the receipt or an affidavit by the, with just a note basically signed by the guy that uh look, I'm I'm not going up to the dump today with your stuff cuz I got three other guys' stuff to take, but I'm taking it to the dump. Otherwise, uh I I think we wanna see the legality of how do we hold the um, how do we hold the other individuals accountable kind of up the, up the food chain on this thing? Because that's the problem. We have unlicensed illegal haulers out there and people are are grabbing up some low-ball guy that they get a referral to or find on a street corner. And uh there's no accountability. I I I contacted a real estate agent the other day. It was a fresh dump. And when I I I looked, I went up the street and looked at the address, had a real estate sign, and he said, oh, no. We we hired a guy that they handle all that. So uh I told him, I says, uh, you know, I didn't go to the dump and I don't think you wanna be the poster child for, you know, a new ordinance. So uh if the city attorney could could bring that information back, so at least we know where to go with this thing, you know?
Will do. That'll be part of the comprehensive report that was directed by the city council on February sixteenth. Once we receive the information, and it seems that the LA County District Attorney's Office has been receptive to providing the information, we'll coordinate that in association with the statistics from the Sheriff's Department and we'll be able to provide a representative detail of arrests versus cases filed.
Great. And I know that the um, that the sheriff's rep, along with the DA's rep, generally comes to the uh dumping task force meetings. They're there every time I've been there. So uh that's uh, there's a good dialogue that goes on there as well. Hey, listen, let me go through my report here real quick because we've hit the witching hour here. So I think uh I submitted my uh my calendar to the uh, to the city clerk. And uh I just wanna hit on a couple of things that are a little bit um, a little bit different. And uh one of them is I participate with the US Congress of Mayors. And um uh none of this stuff that we're going through is uh new to any of us. And uh when we, when we have these conversations, uh get a lot of good information uh from people all over the country uh on some of these things. I had an outstanding opportunity on Friday to participate as a invited guest from a a a mayor from another community to sit in on a discussion by a Medal of Honor recipient, uh Bellevia. And uh we're working on getting a a copy of that um, that the video from that feed that he gave us. And it was just absolutely, I, I mean, I I wanted to go down and sign up to enlist after listening to guy. It was just absolutely amazing. So um anyways, uh those were probably the two most dramatic things uh on there. The other thing is if anybody has um, anybody of an executive level uh that they know of, we have a, the executive director over at the Ipanoag Valley Mosquito Abatement District um is retiring. We've gotta find a replacement. So if anybody knows someone that's of a, that caliber of uh organizational CEO, um the uh touch base with me or uh whatever, and we can get that information back and forth so that uh we can uh get a uh a good qualified candidate um pool to uh to draw from on that, so.
So speaking of that board, Mr. Mayor, are you still gonna be on that board, so?
Until we get a CEO, yeah. They uh talked with some of the other board members. They're reluctant to uh uh to to switch that out, so uh it's um we got, we gotta get that CEO in there and then we'll take a look at that in the future then.
I was, I was talking about the the board member position that you hold with mosquito abatement.
Yes, that's what I just said, yeah.
So I know someone that would be interested in in being part of that board. Maybe we can talk about that later.
Okay. Well, let's, let's keep in mind and uh so probably for the next couple of meetings I'm uh on this year. But go ahead and send me over their name and and we'll uh, we'll uh, I can talk to them, make sure that they know what they're getting into here, so.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
I wonder if we can bring a resolution forward for March uh for um supporting women's, the women's movement, the women's rights.
Yeah.
And celebrating Women's uh Month.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, I think we should do that. Good point.
Okay, so um uh can can we get uh, when you're, when you're putting this stuff together for us for next month, uh Mr. City Attorney, can we also get what the basic timeline and process is for charter amendments? There's a, I had a number of people that have brought some suggestions forward and uh, but uh it seems to be some confusion on that matter. So can you or the, or coordinate with the city clerk and uh get that information over to me?
Of course. We'll bring it back as part of the comprehensive report.
Okay, and uh so on the, on the dumpers and the filings, that's gonna be part of it as well, right?
That one, we come back in response to the February sixteenth direction. I'm waiting on the outside uh agencies to respond with their statistics, but I anticipate it will be relatively soon.
Okay, uh and one other thing is uh, I know we've all gotten uh much more diligent about uh doing our uh our reports. But uh I went over this stuff in the, in the course of uh looking, trying to sort through my um, all my um dealings and uh trips and stuff like that. I know that um it was um kind of come, I I don't know that we can um justify continuing to receive a a mileage reimbursement for effectively three hundred and fifty miles or a little excessive three hundred and fifty miles every month. And I know uh I was approached by another member, a council member. I shut off my mileage and I'm just gonna turn in a mileage report. I think that the um, I would like the the uh city attorney to bring back that as a resolution and then we can. And then we can reinstate it. I don't wanna change an ordinance, but just a temporary suspension of that because, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about some other communities that have gotten called on the carpet over that. And I don't, I I just, I don't wanna be in a position for myself and it's up to you guys if you wanna roll the dice, but there've been communities that had to pay back thousands of dollars because their reports did not adequately reflect, I think the, the term was, empirical demonstrable information that shows the allowance matches actual and necessary expenses occurred. So anyways, I think that just to cover our bases, that that might be something that each of you wanna think about. You just gotta pick up the phone if you wanna do it and call HR. And, you know, they'll, they'll, mine's suspended until they bring it back on. So however you guys wanna do it, but, you know, just think about it. Keep yourselves out of trouble.
So do we want to bring that back as an item or do we want just an advisement to council?
I think, I think that, I think we all have the ability to, you know, I don't know, make it a policy.
I'd like to get that back advisement unless unless Mr. Beck, you know of anything right now.
No, I mean, I've, I've researched the issue. Something's changed I'm not aware of. It's, you know, I don't, I don't wanna immediately off the top of my head give advice on something that could be, that could be impactful. What I say is to bring it back as a discussion item. And then if the council so deems I can bring back a resolution, what I'm hesitant to is bring back a resolution that could be immediately changed, that would be essentially ineffectual. So I could turn it back.
That's why I suggested that if you don't think you've been hitting the mileage limits this last year, maybe you might wanna just cover your bases, call, pick up the phone, call HR, and she'll shut it off. And when you want it back and you think you're hitting it, you can turn it back on. You know, but it's not that difficult to track your mileage and in fact, they have an app for that, so. Maybe that's the easiest thing to do at this point, so. All right? Anything else or?
Mayor, can I give the?
Close to having to do a.
Can I do the city manager's report real quick, Mayor? There's, I have two things. First, I wanted to let the public know that our website will have the ongoing area vaccine sites in the AV. The list is growing almost every day, so please check our our website. There's gonna be one this weekend here and I know they're gonna be opening up at the fair on, I think it's March eighth. I'm gonna go by that tomorrow and look at the the site and the logistics. And I think we're gonna have some volunteer opportunities out there. And then I would like to say, close with a statement. As the city manager, I would like to personally thank our dedicated staff, our incredible community members, our nonprofit educational and aerospace partners, and our engaged elected officials for your continued support.
Excellent. Anything else or motion adjourned?
Before we make that motion, I just wanted to ask about the Fourth of July fireworks. That's coming up pretty soon. I know that COVID restrictions are kind of being lifted little by little. We'll see what and when we are in July. But I think that if we put a fireworks show for Fourth of July, I think that that would be good for the community. And in some sense, it may reduce the number of illegal fireworks sales if we have somebody, you know, doing doing a fireworks show. I thought I mentioned that to staff and the rest of the council to see if we can look at the potential of having fireworks show again, not knowing what the restrictions of COVID are gonna be. But at least we can have a plan if allowed to have one.
We could, we could just do it and tell them to come arrest us. I think it's booked in other areas.
Staff will investigate that and respond to council as appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Where we shall stand adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.